Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of the Loney Moore's Paradigm, I take all the wrong. The acronym is AMPAC and the chief judge of constable court. Today is class 145, class 145. What are we learning in class 144? Well, we're starting to learn about this word called sovereignty, right? Because sovereignty is assessed to the state. So therefore, what the Moores have to start understanding is that sovereignty is all about the supreme power of the state. It's the absolute superior power of the state. And the state, right, start to give powers to the government. So all the powers vested into the state and then the state turns around and vests powers into the government. All the sovereignty is vested into the government. And then the government turns around and does what? It protects the sovereignty of the people. So therefore, the state and the government starts to recognize the nationality of the people. Without state recognition, there is no nationality. The state extends nationality to you. You don't just get to, just turn around and say, "Oh, my nationality is Japanese." Well, the question is, does Japan recognize you as Japanese? Has the state of Japan recognized you? You just can't turn around and say, "I'm Italian." Okay, the question is, does Italy recognize you? Does the state of Italy recognize you as being Italian? The answer is either yes or no. The next question, okay, can you prove your nationality? Do you have documentation from the state, right? Do you have documentation from the state? And this is what Moores don't understand. Moores have been taught all this time that the state is the human being. The Moores have been taught that sovereignty is in your head as an abstract. And that's just not true. Sovereignty is vested in the state. Then the state turns around and vests sovereignty into the government. Then the government takes care of we, the people. But it's the government that's responsible for allowing the people to fill out forms, applications, to be recognized as a national of said state. And this is what the Moores never understood. It's because the Moores never taught statehood. Why isn't it the Moores never taught statehood? It's because the FBI and the CIA did not want the Moores to start talking about statehood because that would have been the answer to the test. So the Moores have been stuck in this thing called divine and national movement. What does divine mean? Divine is listed under what? Culture, right? Divine is listed under culture because you start talking about what? Churches, right? Your church religion, ecclesiastical law, which is private law. So the Moores have to understand, when they started talking about the word divine and national movement, what they didn't understand, what they were talking about is what? Church and state. But the Moores spent most of their time talking church rather than talking state. This is what we have to take away from when they say divine and national movement. However, if we had started studying international law like Barack H. Obama wanted us to do, then we would find out quickly that in international law, it set up the proper sequential order of what the Moores should have been studying. And what is the Moores should have been studying? Statehood. And statehood is a subject of international law, right? Let's take it to the board. Right? And what I want to explain to the Moores is this. If the Moores were taking the time to study international law, right? We're still talking about, okay, what do we learn in class 144? Well, we learned about sovereignty. Sovereignty is vested into the state. But here's what happened. If we were to study international law in its proper format, it's things such as what? United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People of the year 2007 that was signed by Barack H. Obama in 2010. Barack H. Obama was trying to send the Moores hence. If you go to the Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, you go to Article 5, what does it say? It says, "Indigenous people have a right to maintain, strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions." While retaining their right to participate fully, if they so choose in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state. That's the Rights of Indigenous People. They're trying to give the Moores the answer to the test, right? You know what this is called? It's called public law. Because who creates law? States. Public law is from a state. Right? So down here, look what I have down here. The Moores Americans Movement is about what? Divine and national movement. So the Moores Americans Movement is about what? A divine and national movement. Now, what is all this red text I have up here? Okay, check it out, Moores. Because we're still talking about class 144. In class 144, we're talking about what? Sovereignty is vested into the state. But if we hadn't been studying international law, we'd have found out the state is about setting up what? The government, right? So it's a state, constitution, and government, right? Protecting the needs of the people. The rights of the people. The integrity of the people, right? The economic and social reforms of the people. So listen. Here's where we made our mistake as Moores. See, under Article 5, international law started telling the Moores the sequential order of what we should have been studying, right? We should have been studying this sequential order right here. Political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. So check it out. Look what I have down here. I've got these words set up, right? Political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. Where did I get these words from? Article 5, right, of the Rights of Indigenous People. So look at the breakdown. Look at the sequential order of what international law set up. They say, "You Moores need to study what first?" Political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. So there's political institutions, legal institutions, economic institutions, social institutions, and cultural institutions. And the breakdown is political 20%, legal 20%, economic 20%, social 20%, cultural 20%. Now, listen. There's this rule called the 80/20 rule. A lot of people know about what's called the 80/20 rule, right? You see this right here? Louis should have been an 80% focus for Moores. Colonize people. Moores are colonized people. Look what the United Nations is trying to tell the Moores. You Moores should spend 20, 40, 60, 80% of your time studying political, legal, economic, and social institutions and reforms. You should have spent 20% of your time studying culture, which is you studying divine. Culture is listed for churches. That's a church status, right? That's your culture as a people. So it should have been the 80/20 rule. So 20, 40, 60, 80. 80% of our time as Moores should have been spent on the political, legal, economic, and social reform. We should have been studying that. And 20% culture, because culture falls on the church, et cetera, in order to come up with 100% of our time. But instead, what did the Moores do? Under the Moores American Movement, what did the Moores do? Moores spent 80% of their time studying divine. You see that? Moores spent 80% of their time studying divine, because divine is listed under culture. And the 20 rule, the 80/20 rule, they spent 20% of their time studying legal. They studied the United States municipal laws. And this is what the Moores did. They studied 20% of their time, the domestic laws of the United States. 80% of their time studying culture, because they were all studying literature. And when they thought they were studying law, they're studying the domestic laws of the United States. But what the United Nations told you to do? The United Nations told you to study political, legal, economic, and social reforms. And then study culture. Last, you see the sequential order going back to Article 5? What's the sequential order? Political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. Culture is last. You see how they said that? But culture is listed under what? Church status. The Moores have been studying divine. They've been studying the Pope. They keep talking about papables, Secret Treaty of Verona, schism, Roman candlesticks, Howler slaying dragon, all this Masonic crap. We wasted all our time studying divine. There's nothing wrong with divine, but guess what? Divine is supposed to be over here. You see where divine, divine falls on the culture. That should have been 20% of our time. This is why the vast majority of people go to church once a week. The vast majority. Right? Even the Moores saying, "Oh, it's Holy Day on Friday." Okay, that means you're supposed to spend the majority of your time working on what? Politics, right? Political means what? We looked up in class 144, what does it mean? Government, right? The public affairs of the state. That's what political means. It's the government. So we should have been studying political. We should have been studying legal. What does legal mean? That's the legislative branch, judicial branch, working together to come up with statutes, laws, codes, regulations to create an organized dual society. Then we should have been studying economics on how the states, right? The states start to collect what? Taxes. And then right here, under social reforms, how do we take care of the needs of the people? Right? So you got public works, right? All the public works is what we need. All the public works for the people. And then last but not least, culture. Your culture is last. But most people made culture first. Now listen to me. Listen to the next words I'm about to say. You must understand what's coming over this, psychology. Psychologically speaking, what did the Moores Americans put first? They put first divine and national movement. Listen to what I'm saying. Psychologically speaking, they put the word divine first. So psychologically speaking, people study divine what first? Then they so-called study national second. But what the United Nations tell you to do? The United Nations said, "You need to study what first?" Political. Legal, economic, social, then cultural. So you see how the United Nations, psychologically speaking, they said study politics first. But what did the Moores do? The Moores put the word divine first. And this is why we've been on a treadmill. We've been studying religious books. We can't stop talking about schism. This is our problem. We spent 80% of our time studying the last contributing factor, the last contributing factor that the United Nations, that international law told you to study was culture last. And what did the Moores do? They put the word divine first. You must understand what the FBI and the CIA did to the Moores scientifically. They got the Moores thinking divine first. So you spent all your time trying to master divinity. That's what divine means, divinity. That's deity. That's church talk. And this is why the Moores got stuck on the treadmill, right? So over here on the national, they spent 20% of their time studying what? The local domestic law of the United States. When the Moores should have been studying their own state, how to do what? How to establish what? The political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions of their own state. This is Rights of Indigenous People. But instead, we were studying the legal statutes of the United States. And why did we end up studying the statutes of the United States? Because the Moores scientific kept trying to tell the Moores enforce the Constitution in United States America. So we had studied their seven articles of the United States America Constitution and their 27 amendments. Then we started studying all the local municipalities, all their statutes, codes, et cetera. All their Rans Judic ótum. And we, all this local stuff. And this is why we never ever got a result out of this. We've been on a treadmill going nowhere fast. So it looks like movement. This is the facade right here. Movement. There's no movement. The movement was a treadmill. There's a big difference between movement and progress. And this is what the Moores don't understand. This was a psychological attack on our people. The FBI and the CIA said, "Put the word divine first." So Moores dived into that first. But what did international law tell us? Study politics first. What does political mean? Government, right? And this is where we made our mistake, Moores. So we gotta understand what's coming over the 80/20 rule. We gotta spend 20, 40, 60, 80. 80% of our time studying political, legal, economic, and social reforms. And spend 20% of our time studying divinity. So it should be the 80/20 rule. We gotta get out of this 80/20 rule of this. This has not moved us forward. That's not progress. This right here, studying the United States, that's not progress. So what's, when the, 100% of what? Failure, stagnation. But the Rights of Indigenous People taught you how to move forward, and the Moores didn't do it. And this has been our problem. This is what we should learn from class 144. Sovereignty is vested into what? The state. It's all about the state. You must make a separation between both what? Church and state. The United Nations told you to study state. The Moores scientific was telling you to study divine. And this has been our problem. We don't know how to separate from what? Church and state. That's been our problem. And we put church first. That's been our problem as Moores. And that's what we should take away from class 144. We never understood sovereignty. We actually thought sovereignty had something to do with divinity, and it doesn't. Sovereignty is all about the state. Well, we thought sovereignty was about our church. Wrong answer. We failed. That's why we have to now take accountability for our own actions. We gotta have some humility and say, "You know what? My bad. There's nothing wrong with divinity." But you gotta spend 80% of your time understanding how to decolonize through political, legal, economic, social, cultural institutions. That's five. One, two, three, four, five. Those are the five principles, all right? That's what we have to learn from class 144. All right? So the Moores don't always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount, right? The only way you can restore, right, which is called reparation. What is reparation? Reparation means to repair, to restore, right? So the Constitution is already designed to restore. It's a restoration of your nation. You must restore your nation through a Constitution, because that creates what? Sovereignty. There is no sovereignty without the state. That's what Moores gotta understand. The Constitution is paramount. It's the first law that we need. All right? So in the Rights of Indigenous People, let's go over this real quick. Right? The Rights of Indigenous People, you go down to what? Article 3. This is what the Moores should have understood, because this is what Barack H. Obama tried to get the Moores to understand. Okay, let's go down to Article 3. All right, let's go over this. Because keep in mind, what are we talking about? We're talking sovereignty. Because the Moores want to collect taxes, but the only way to collect taxes, we must restore our sovereignty. What is sovereignty about? Statehood. So we gotta restore the state. Only way to restore the state, we needed what? A Constitution. The Constitution does what? It starts to re- reinstate what? The political status. Political means what? Government, right? All right, so let's read this. Start with Article 3. This is what Barack H. Obama wanted the Moores to understand. Okay, no Article 3.
Article 3. Indigenous peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development.
So you see the sequential order that the United Nations under international law is trying to tell you? It tells you first, you need political status. That's where you get your freedom. Your freedom, free. Your freedom, right, is vested in your political status. What does political status mean? The government. We have to self-government. That's what Article 73 of the Charter of the United Nations is all about. Self-government. You need a government in order to start to govern on behalf of the state. So it's that we need a political status. Then it gets you what? Economic, social, and cultural development. You see how Article 3 is giving you the answer to the test, the sequential order? It's trying to tell Moores, this is the order that you needed first, political. But political is set up by the government, but there is no government without what? The state and its constitution. Then it said economic, social, and cultural development. But the Moores got stuck right here in culture. They put that first, and it should have been last. Okay, let's look at Article 4. This is what Barack H. Obama tried to get the Moores to read. This is what Juan Emmanuel tried to get the Moores to go read, but they didn't do it. Article 4.
Article 4. Indigenous peoples exercising their right to self-determination have the right to autonomy or self-government in matters relating to their internal and local affairs, as well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions.
All right, so what are they saying here? One, two, and they're giving the Moores the answer to the test. So Article 4 says indigenous people, so Moroccans, right? Exercising of their right to self-determination. What is self-determination? Self-government, right? That's your political status. Have the right to autonomy or self-government. How do you get autonomy? You need a distinct what? State. A distinct state sets up what? Jurisdiction. You need a distinct what? Jurisdiction. So your self-determination comes to the state, because the state determines who you are. The state extends sovereignty to you. The state says what your nationality is. That's how you have self-determination, because now the state is self-determining itself under unilateral constitution. And then it turns around and recognizes its nationals, right? And it creates autonomy under that nationality, because now a government is self-governing, and the government itself extends sovereignty to the people through its political reforms. I.e., the people get to fill out applications. That way, the state can recognize their nationality. Because the state extends sovereignty to the people. Now listen. Article 4. Indigenous people exercising their right to self-determination have the right to autonomy or self-government. There is no government without the state. And matters relating to, listen, their internal and local affairs. What's internal? Internal what? Internal what? Government of the state. Everything within the borders of their state, interior of their domains, and their local affairs. What is local affairs about? Your distinct what? Local law. Your domestic law. This creates what? Your public affairs, right? We looked up the definition of political in class 144. Political meant what? It's about what? The government and the public affairs. So this right here says local affairs, which is the public affairs. As well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions. All your functions are autonomous. Separate from who? The colonists. Separate from the United States of America. I'm talking jurisdiction. The Empire Morocco is separate and autonomous from the United States of America. I'm talking jurisdiction. It's in layers. And this is what Barack H. Obama wanted us all to understand. Okay, Article 5. What's Article 5 saying?
Article 5. Indigenous peoples have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully if they so choose in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state.
So here we go again. So on Article 5, distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. So what came first? Distinct what? Political. What's political? The government to set up. The government is on behalf, works on behalf of what? The state. The state has what? A constitution that set up what? The government. What is legal? That's what? Your legislative branch and your judicial branch takes care of all the legal affairs. So the executive branch and the legislative branch comes up with law. They ratify laws. And now the judges can go back and do what? Enforce the law. It has the force of law. Statutes and laws create the force of law. That way, the judges can maintain the legal affairs of the state. And you deal with economics, right? It's political economics. So the state takes care of economics, collecting taxes, right? It's got exports, imports, et cetera. Then you take care of the social welfare, the social welfare of the people. And then last but not the least, it's cultural institutions such as churches, et cetera. Wherever the culture that the people want to indulge in, you indulge here. But what happened is the Moores put culture first. That's divinity. What should have came first? Politics of what? The state. So Article 5 gave the Moores the answers to the test. The Moores needed a state in order to establish the political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. And then once you set all that up in Article 5, what do you have now? What can the state do once you set all that up? Okay, Article 6.
Article 6. Every indigenous individual has the right to a nationality.
Okay, so you see the sequential order to have Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5? And then finally, they come out with what? Article 6? Because they say if you did all the above first, now the state has the right to do what? The state does what? Every indigenous individual has a right to a nationality. Why does the Moroccans have a right to nationality? It's because the state. The state, the state extends nationality to you. So when the United Nations put together the Rights of Indigenous People, it was trying to tell the Moores, "You have to put things in sequential order first before you can keep running around screaming out loud, 'Oh, Article 6 said we have a right to nationality.'" Well, the question is, why do you read the first five articles? You don't have no nationality unless the state, the state is sovereign. And then the state extends sovereignty to you to claim your nationality. And this will happen to the Moores. We didn't read instructions. Even though this is substantive law, right? This is United Nations resolution that set up substantive law, but within it, it's also set up what? Procedural law. What is the procedure? What boxes did the Moores need to check? And it gave me the answers to the test, but the Moores don't read instructions. All the Moores ran Article 6. We have a right to a nationality. Yeah, that's true. But who extends the nationality to you? The state. Not your dangong church, and certainly not your civic organization. Moores don't read. This is our problem. Okay, listen. Once you follow the instructions of the Rights of Indigenous People that Barack H. Obama tried to get the Moores to go back and read, and you checked the boxes of the first five articles, and now you said you need to do what? Set up what? Your political, legal, economic, social, and cultural affairs institutions, right? You gotta set up those institutions first, right? Institutions. You needed the institutions first. That creates the state. Because the state is what? The land, but the land in the Constitution. And within the Constitution, it sets up the politics, which is the government. It sets up these institutions, right? Okay, so if you follow the instructions, all right, what's next? Okay. You need what next? A constitution. Here's the Constitution for the Empire Morocco, right? This is what's happening. What's the Constitution represent? The state. It's the express legal instrument that sets up the institution of the government. It sets up the institutions, plural, right? This is Article 5 of the Rights of Indigenous People. Article 5 says, "You need a constitution to set up all these reforms, these institutions," right? So if you got a constitution, such as we have a Constitution for the Empire Morocco, okay, what type of constitution is it? Is it, what type of state is it? It's an external sovereign independent state. That's what the Empire Morocco is. It's recognized by other states on planet Earth through what? Treaty relations. We learned in the X-ray tradition document of 1906, right? You got Hoff and Philip was talking about the fact that United States of America had what? Treaty relations with the Moorish Empire. They talked about the various treaties with the Moorish Empire. So states are recognized by other states. So the Empire Morocco has recognized several states on planet Earth, and in like manner, those states recognize the Empire Morocco, and they got into what's coming over these diplomatic relations. So we as Moores have to reinstate the government, the state itself. The Empire Morocco was in a shallow grave, and we have to reinstate it through restoration. It had to emerge as a sovereign independent state to reinstate the Sultan as head of state. Then we have to reinstate the executive branch, legislative branch, judicial branch, right? This is what we have to do as Moores, to create what? An autonomous political status, autonomous functions of our government. This is what we learned in the Rights of Indigenous People. Article 3, 4, and 5. Now, once you have the political institutions put together, now the state can extend what to the people? Nationality. What nationality? Well, the nationality of Morocco is what? Moroccans. This is what we should have learned. This is what Barack H. Obama wanted us to understand. We needed political reforms. We need to set up institutions. We need to what? Self-government. Going back to Constitution for the Empire Morocco. We had placeholder dates, right? The Moroccan nationals had placeholder dates that we set forth to try to achieve these placeholder dates, right? So what have we achieved so far? The yellow represents strike through, right? We've achieved these dates. First, we drafted the Constitution on February 1st, 2024. Then it was signed by the Seir Rahas on February 29th, 2024. Who the Seir Rahas? That's the Speaker, right? The women who hold the pen of legislation. That's the House, the legislative branch. All the Seir Rahas, who are the speakers of the Houses of the several internal Moor states, right? The speakers signed it on February 29th, 2024, in good faith. Number three, then the Constitution was signed by the Wazirs on February 29th, 2024. So the Wazirs are who? The governors. The governors of the internal Moor states such as ADPAC as example, the Wazirs are governor. So the governor and the Speaker of the House, right? Of all the respective Moors internal states. There's several Moors internal states, right? Signed on February 29th, 2024, in good faith. Number four, we have an election day for the Sultan on May 12th, 2024. So on May 12th, 2024, we had an election, a plebiscite, right? We had a public election to vote for the Sultan for the Empire of Morocco. A plebiscite amongst who? Moroccans. What recognized us as Moroccans? It was what? Our internal constitutions. Our internal, such as ADPAC as example, recognized our state, recognized it as being what? A provincial government in the Empire Morocco. So all the several internal Moor states such as ADPAC as example, we got other Moor states. All of us were nationals of our states because we returned to Morocco and we pledged our allegiance to what? Our internal Moor states that recognize us as Moors of the state. Moore means what? Moroccan. So therefore, all the Moor states came together, right? All the Moor states came together. And we elected as Moroccans, not Moors Americans. Because Moors Americans are still what? Colonized Americans. Moors Americans' political status are naturalized Moors who now their political status under adoption is what? American. But the Moors had an obligation under Treaty Madrid, 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, to return to Morocco, right? And choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. So the Moor states such as ADPAC as example, allowed the Moors to come back and pledge their allegiance to a Moroccan government, a provincial Moroccan government that recognized itself as being a part of the empire. Okay, listen, do you see down here on the note? No, right, no.
Note, initial statement for the Constitution expressing the nature and intention of the provincial government.
Pause, read that sentence again.
Initial statement for the Constitution expressing the nature and intention of the provincial government.
All right, so therefore, ADPAC, ADPAC, right? Is a provincial. ADPAC, Alonzo Woods, Trina Monte, Colorado, is a provincial government in the Empire of Morocco. You see that? We never claimed to be an external state. We are the internal, internal state of the empire, okay? So since we're an internal state, we say we, we, we the Moors in Morocco. So we're talking what? Jurisdiction. We the Moors in Morocco. Did we say we the Moors in America? No. We said we are the Moors in Morocco. Who are Moors? Moroccans. The only way to be recognized is Moroccan. The state has to recognize you as one of its own. So the internal states start to recognize us as returning back to where? The jurisdiction of what? Morocco as Moroccans. So now that we've done that, what happened? It gave us a right as Moroccans in the jurisdiction of Morocco because we no longer colonize Moors. We, we as Moors, Moroccans of the several Moroccan states, right? Followed the instructions of Treaty Madrid, Article 15, Paragraph 1. And we returned to Morocco's jurisdiction. What about Morocco? The Empire Morocco jurisdiction. And now that we're in the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco, now we turn around and we have a right to elect a Sultan. And we did that on May 12th, 2024. Also, line number five, there was also a Declaration of Independence by the Sultan on May 13th, 2024. Right, so we've now checked these boxes, right? Now we got line number six, seven, all the way through 10, we haven't got here yet. But these first, one, two, three, four, five lines, we've accomplished that, okay? Now let's talk about the election day for the Sultan of May 12th. That day is behind us, okay? There was an election, a plebiscite, right? A public, public election amongst who? Moroccans. How you know you're Moroccan? Because the state recognized you as Moroccan, such as ADPAC as example. And through the WRC, we established a regional agency common known as the Wazir Regional Council. And the Wazir Regional Council set up a regional agency and organization that way all the separate Moroccan states could come together at a diplomatic body to come together, right? And through that diplomatic body, we set up reforms to start to work together, bring all the several states together under one political body of the WRC. And through it, we started to put together reforms to start to elect a Sultan for the Empire of Morocco. But the first thing we have to do is do what? We have to draft the Constitution. So on February 1st, we drafted the Constitution amongst the Moroccan states. Amongst the Moroccan states, the internal Moroccan states, the Seir Rahas, the Speaker of the House, legislative branch signed it. And the Wazirs, which is the government, the governors, signed it. And because of that, now we established the draft. Now we can put it into action. That way, now the election day for the Sultan could take place, right? It took place May 12th. There was also a Declaration of Independence on May 13th. So who do we elect as the Sultan of Morocco? I want to say congratulations to Sultan-elect Abdul Smith Al Kabir. Congratulations to your brother Abdul. He ran as a candidate against two other candidates with three candidates who ran for Sultan. I want to say congratulations also to all the candidates who ran. Good brother Abdul Smith Al Kabir is now the Sultan-elect, right? So right here says, Empire Morocco, Abdul Smith Al Kabir has been elected Sultan by the people on May 12th, 2024. The Moroccans, the Moors government voted for a Sultan to sit in the seat of the Empire Morocco's government. So I want to say congratulations to your brother Abdul Smith Al Kabir. According to the Constitution, Empire Morocco, the Sultan was sitting in the seat for seven years. It's a seven-year term. We're making history here, Moors. Only way for the Moors to come back to Morocco, we have to check certain boxes. They haven't been a Sultan since 1956. So our good brother Abdul Smith Al Kabir is now the Sultan-elect. Why is he Sultan-elect? It's because Abdul Smith Al Kabir hasn't taken his allegiance to the Constitution yet. That would take place on June 8th, 2024, when he takes his oath to the Constitution in the state of the Empire Morocco, right? And this is the flag of the Empire Morocco for the nation. That's the flag. It's a circle seven flag, right? Circle seven flag, right? It represents what? Love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice, the five star. That's five points of interest. And then the top green stripe represents what? International law. And the bottom green stripe represents what? Moroccan law, right? So a circle seven, seven points of interest on this flag, all right? So once again, I want to say congratulations to your brother Abdul Smith Al Kabir, the Sultan-elect. We're moving forward, Moors. What does this mean? We're decolonizing, right? We're decolonizing. This is the only way to decolonize. We have to restore the state. What states? Empire Morocco. Listen, the Sultan-elect also ran on May 13th. A Declaration of Independence for the Empire Morocco, right? Now, I will not read it. I just wanted to show the Moors. Here it is, it's a two-page Declaration of Independence, okay? Declaration of Independence is dated May 13th, 2024. Now, the Sultan was able to read this out loud, so it hasn't been recorded. Right now, we're just editing the video. That way, we can release it hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Then we're going to hear the Sultan himself, the Sultan-elect, reading the Declaration of Independence for the Empire Morocco, so therefore, the Empire Morocco is now going what? Decolonizing, setting up what? The government. We have to self-govern. We have to check the political boxes, right? We have to check the procedural boxes. This is what we're doing. So speaking of procedural boxes. Barack Obama wanted the Moors to go back and read the Charter of the United Nations. Ron Emanuel, right? The mayor of Chicago wanted the Moors to go back and read the Charter of the United Nations because Ron Emanuel said what? Your rights are guaranteed in the Charter of the United Nations. So what did the Moors have to do on the Chapter 11, right? It's about what? A declaration regarding non-self-governing territories. Under Article 73, the Moors had to do what? Declare. But guess who else was declaring? The member states. The member states were also declaring, right? They were taking an oath. They were signing a contract. They say they also declared that if they're overseeing a non-self-governing territory, that they also respect the political reforms of the indigenous people who are rising up to emerge as a sovereign independent state. So the Sultan-elect, Abdul Smith Al Kabir, read a declaration out loud under Article 73, right? Was a decoration of what? Independence. A decoration, here it is, a decoration independence for the Empire Morocco. So the Sultan is declaring independence of what? That's the key word. Independence of what? The Empire of Morocco, not the Kingdom of Morocco. But the Empire of Morocco. You must make the distinction. Mohammed the Fifth stepped down in 1956 and left the office of Sultan wide open. He left the Empire Morocco void of a government and void of a head of state. So therefore, the Empire Morocco was never decolonized fully. It was never a complete decolonization. It was a decolonization in part because the only thing Mohammed the Fifth did was liberate a small territory coming on as the Kingdom of Morocco. That's an Udi-Posidus jurisdiction within the Greater Empire Morocco. But the Kingdom of Morocco is not Morocco. Morocco is an empire. And that's what the Moors got to understand. So we're doing what? It's a declaration independence for what? The Empire of Morocco. It's the independence for the Empire Morocco. That's the state. That's the name on the treaties. That is the high, high, high contracting party and not the Kingdom of Morocco. The Kingdom of Morocco's name is nowhere on the treaties whatsoever. It's not the high contracting party. It's not the sovereign. The sovereign is the Empire Morocco. And that's what we're declaring our independence of, right? So who are we declaring our independence away from? That's the question. We're declaring our independence away from who? The administration. Let's go back, right, to the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, right? We're declaring our independence of the empire. The empire is vast. It's an extensive national state. The empire covers what? The seven continents and the seven seas. But first, we'll start with the signatory powers who signed the Act of Al-Saraas of 1906. We'll start with the territories of the signatory powers who signed the Treaty of Madrid of 1880. We'll start with the signatory powers who signed bilateral treaties as well as multilateral treaties all around planet Earth, recognizing that territory as being a part of the empire. That's what we got to understand about the empire declaring independence from who? Colonizers, all right? Now, keep in mind, Moors, because you know Moors out there, they'll be in their feelings. But my question to them is, did you have enough time to do this yourself? Did the Moors Americans have enough time to restore the Empire Morocco? The answer is yes. It's been 95, 95 years since Don't Draw Leaves Been Gone. This is a calibre event. Look at this. The Moors have had the 1930s, the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, the early 2000s, 2010, and it started in the 2020s. 95 years. The Moors have had 95 years to try to decolonize the Empire Morocco. They ain't doing it. So now, we look up and we say, okay, in the year 2024, we're finally declaring our independence. Independence what? The Empire Morocco. Not the Moors' science temple, right? Not no Cherokee nation, right? It's the Empire Morocco, finally in the year 2024, 95 years after Nobles been gone. Finally, finally checking the boxes. And the Moors Americans have had decades to do this. There hasn't been a Sultan since 1956. So the Sultan stepped down in 1956. The Moors could have declared their independence 1957 easily and sat in the chair of Sultan. So since 1956, how many years have the Moors had since Mohammed the Fifth stepped down? Okay, so that's what? One, two, three, right there. 1957, 58, 59. But look at these years. That's 10 years. 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. 68 years. 68 years we haven't had a Sultan. The Moors have been too busy writing books and papers and talking about literature. They've been procrastinating. So the time is up. And in 2024, we are finally starting to declare our independence and restore the Empire Morocco with a government. That's the whole key. The state is the Empire Morocco. But what do we need? We need a what? Political reform. We need a political what? Institution. What's the political institution? What's the legal institution? That's the branch of government. This is what we set up through the Constitution, right? Listen, here's a list of rulers. This is Wikipedia. So on Wikipedia, it tells you, list of rulers of Morocco. Now, you must understand when they say Morocco, what is Morocco according to treaties? An empire. So you got to pay close attention to what they do here, okay? As we go down the list, pay close attention. But they're going to give you the answer to the test right off the top. The distinction between who? Sultans and who? Kings. I'll say it again. On Wikipedia, it's going to make a distinction between Sultan and kings. But look what they tell you right off the top. No.
List of rulers of Morocco from the Wikipedia, the free encyclopedia. This is the list of rulers of Morocco since 789. The common and formal titles of these rulers has varied depending on the time period. Since 1957, the designation king has been used.
All right, read it one more time.
List of rulers of Morocco from Wikipedia, the free encyclopedia. This is the list of rulers of Morocco since 789. The common and formal titles of these rulers has varied depending on the time period. Since 1957, the designation king has been used.
All right, so this is the list of rulers of Morocco since 789. But Morocco is a king, is an empire. Let me say it again. Morocco is an empire according to what? Trees. So this is a list of rulers since 789. The common and formal title of these rulers have varied depending on the time period. Listen, since 1957, the designation king has been used. You see what they're telling you? They ain't been a Sultan since 1956. They tell you this all the time. Okay, so right here, it says what? The present king, right? No. No.
The present king of Morocco is Mohammed VI of the Al-Ahwi dynasty since 23rd of July of 1999.
Okay, so right now, the present king, right? The present, the present king of Morocco is Mohammed VI. Did it say the present Sultan? Or it said present king? It's present king of Morocco. There hasn't been a Sultan since 1956. Mohammed the Fifth, right, was the first king of the Kingdom of Morocco. A small Udi-Posadidist jurisdiction, 1957. So now, it's called the king of the Kingdom of Morocco. That's the name of the state, right? Law is precise. So what's the name of the state? What's the legal personality? King, right? Kingdom of Morocco. So there's a king of Morocco, right, of what? The Kingdom of Morocco. You see? All right, now listen. So this is a list of rulers, right? So right here, it says, right, it says name, right, lifespan, reign, when did they start becoming the ruler? When did their reign end? Right, here's some notes, a family image, et cetera, right? So what are we going to focus on? Name, and when their reign started and ended, okay? Now watch this. You come down to the present. Right, close to the present. That started around the time of, let's say, Nobadraw Lee time. Okay? You'll start around Nobadraw Lee in 1912, right? Who was the Sultan in 1912? Yusuf bin Hassan was a Sultan in 1912, right? Until when? 1927. Right, so Nobadraw Lee comes out in 1913. So while Nobadraw Lee is out, guess what? There was already a Sultan, and there he is. There is a Sultan, okay? From 1912 until 1927. Okay, who was the next Sultan? Okay, who was the next Sultan? The next Sultan was who? Mohammed bin Yusuf, which is who? Mohammed the Fifth. Right, under his first reign. So Mohammed the Fifth became Sultan when? 1927, okay? So 1927, and then he was deposed, right, in 1953. He got removed from office by France. Keep in mind, France signed the Treaty of Fehz in 1912, and France took over as the de facto Sultan. But what's my point here? These are all what? Let me go back to the top. These are all what? Sultans. You see that? The Al-Ahwi Sultans of Morocco. Sultans of Morocco, what? The Empire Morocco. Sultans, I'm being specific for a reason. About to make a point. About to make a point. Some Moors out there are under the impression that Nobadraw Lee was a Sultan. Nobadraw Lee never said he was a Sultan. But the Moors Americans are falsely, falsely saying that Nobadraw Lee was a Sultan. Right? But clearly, we see that when Nobadraw Lee hit the scene in 1912, or should I say 1913? There was already a Sultan in place in 1912. 1912, a Sultan was Yusuf bin Hassan. And then Mohammed the Fifth became Sultan in 1927. So there was a Sultan while Nobadraw Lee was here with us. So how are the Moors Americans running around saying that Nobadraw Lee was a Sultan when there was already Sultan in place? There they go. There's Mohammed the Fifth right there. Nobadraw Lee transitioned in 1929. There's two Sultans while Nobadraw Lee was here. So why do the Moors, these grand sheiks, keep lying to their students, saying that Nobadraw Lee was a Sultan? Then you got some other grand sheiks to say that they was a Sultan as well. So they lying on Noble, because Noble never said he was a Sultan. But these grand sheiks keep pushing Noble to a point that's beyond even what Noble said. These grand sheiks need to stop lying to their students. Okay, now listen. So Mohammed the Fifth was deposed, right, in 1953, because France removed him from office, okay? What does deposed mean? No?
Deposed. It's a verb. One, removed from office suddenly and forcefully.
So Mohammed the Fifth was removed from office suddenly and forcefully by France. Because France was controlling the Empire Morocco through the Treaty of Fehz in 1912. So Mohammed the Fifth got deposed, right? So he got removed as Sultan by France in 1953, okay? Now, then he got reinstated in 1955. Okay, in 1955, he got reinstated, okay, as Sultan again. So two years, he spent two years on Madagascar island, outside of Africa, right? He was deposed and removed by France. So then he gets reinstated in 1955, right? So in 1957, look what Wikipedia puts here. Proclaim king of Morocco. But that's not an accurate statement, is it? It should say, "King of what?" Kingdom of Morocco. That's what it should say. That's the accurate statement, right? Now watch this. So in 1957, Mohammed the Fifth becomes king. He's no longer Sultan. He becomes king in 1957. Look what they do next. Watch, watch what Wikipedia does. You see that break? Right, you see the void? Right here is a void. Right here is a void, right here. Look what they, look what they wrote right here next. 1957 to present, Al-Ahwi kings of Morocco. You see that? Now, they're making a distinction. Mohammed the Fifth now is king. Morocco has a king. But what has a king? The Kingdom of Morocco has a king. But they totally, they totally made a break right here. 1957 to present, there's only kings of Morocco, but they're not being specific. Law is precise. It should say what? King of the Kingdom of Morocco. You see? Okay, listen. So now they make that break, right? 1957, so who now the king? Mohammed bin Yusuf, which is who? Mohammed the Fifth. Mohammed the Fifth now becomes king, right? So now they say reign started 1957. That's what? King, not Sultan. And his reign ended what? 1961. Right, and there he is, Mohammed the Fifth. So Mohammed the Fifth was Sultan, then he stepped down and became a king of his small Udi-Posadidist jurisdiction in Africa, and he left the seat of Sultan vacant. He left the Empire Morocco as a state and the Empire Morocco's government void and destitute of a head of state and no government. You see? He stepped down. Okay, so why don't I take you through the exercise? Well, first of all, to show you that the grand sheiks be lying to say that Nobadraw Lee was a Sultan and he wasn't. It's also to show you that the grand sheiks be talking about they're a Sultan and they were not. There's always been a Sultan up until 1956. Okay, so why do I tell you that? Okay. So when was the last Sultan? The last Sultan was after 1956 or 1957, a king, a king of Morocco. So when the last Sultan was what? 1956. Okay, so this list, listen, I'm making a point. If this list stopped, while you're at 1957 to present, talking about kings, then guess what? There needs to be another dropdown box from here, another dropdown box, it needs to be right here, right beneath it. Why? Because in the year 2024, in the year 2024, guess who's now sitting in the seat of Sultan? Abdul Smith Al Kabir. That is the elected Sultan by who? The Moors, i.e. the Moroccans of the Empire Morocco, who are the indigenous people of the land. So this image, a similar image of Sultan Abdul Smith Al Kabir needs to now be in its proper placement, right here, right here. So when Mohammed the Fifth was no longer Sultan, now it should be another dropdown box on Wikipedia, because we're talking the future. This is going to happen. There's going to be a dropdown box on Wikipedia that says, "Now, the new Sultan is who?" It's going to be an image right here, right here, of Abdul Smith Al Kabir. That's what's going to happen. Because all these other rulers... So Mohammed the Fifth is king in 1957. Then his son, Hassan II, was king. And now you got the present king, right? Mohammed VI. He's king. He's not Sultan. There's no more Sultans after 1956. However, we're reinstating what? The office. We're talking what? Politics. Politics represents what? The government. Who's the head of state, the government for the Empire Morocco? Sultan. But the seat of Sultan was vacant when? 1956. It's reinstated when? 2024, for Sultan. So no disrespect to Mohammed the Fifth, Hassan II, or Mohammed VI and his son, the prince, right, who's Hassan III. No disrespect to them, because they got every right to be the king of the Kingdom of Morocco. But they are not Sultans anymore. Okay, listen. What do I have up here? This is what? This is the Constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco of the year 2011. This is their constitution for the what? Kingdom of Morocco. Law is precise. The parties must be known. So who's the party? Kingdom of Morocco. It's a kingdom in a small Udi-Posadidist jurisdiction, and now it's what? A martyr, a martyr state. Since what? 1956, when the Kingdom of Morocco became a member state of the United Nations. A new martyr state called what? Kingdom of Morocco. But does that say Empire Morocco? No. That's a new state. That is not the name on treaties. That's not the high contracting party. That's no disrespect to the Kingdom of Morocco. Mohammed the Fifth stepped down. He was coerced. France didn't want to give Mohammed the Fifth back the pen. And Mohammed the Fifth would have got back the sovereignty of Sultan. Then chances are, once Mohammed the Fifth got his power back, he got his swagger back, he probably ended up beheading the President of France. He probably would beheaded the Prime Minister and the Minister of Foreign Affairs, as well as anybody who was overseeing their War Department. Because France was massacring Moors and Arabs everywhere. So France understood to never give Mohammed the Fifth back the pen of sovereignty of the Empire Morocco. So he coerced Mohammed the Fifth to step down to be a king. But in doing so, what did Mohammed the Fifth do? He left Excalibur in Iraq. He left Excalibur in Iraq. So France walked away from the Excalibur. Because France dissolved the Treaty of Fehz in 1912 that gave them the sovereign power over the Empire Morocco. They dissolved. Mohammed the Fifth walked away from the Empire Morocco as well. So Excalibur, the pen of Sultan, was left in Iraq. And guess who pulled it out? Who pulled out Excalibur? Okay. Who pulled out Excalibur? All right. Okay. Well, first of all, Excalibur is an attachment of what? Right? This is the rock. The rock of salvation. The constitution for the Empire Morocco is the rock. That's the land. That's the rock. Excalibur, right there, stuck in the rock. But who had to pull it out? Okay. The Sultan. You have to restore the Sultan. The Sultan had to pull out Excalibur out of the rock. It's the pen. They sit in the office of Sultan. This is where power is derived from. Your sovereign power, the Sultan of the Empire Morocco. The sovereign authority of the Sultan to enforce the triple principle of the Act of Al-Saraa of 1906. Because it's all about the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan. It's all about his interior domains. It's all about the economic liberty without any inequality in the Empire Morocco when you're the Sultan to represent the sovereignty of the Empire Morocco. But it had to be a Sultan of the Empire of Morocco. There's no Sultan of the Moors' science temple. That's a church. We ought to be ashamed of ourselves. So, Excalibur is now back in the hands of our Sultan-elect. And the Sultan, according to the Constitution, the Sultan, according to the Constitution of our placeholder dates, the Sultan was number six. The Constitution signed by the Sultan on June 3rd. So the Sultan now has been elected, Sultan Abdul Smith Al Kabir, who's the Sultan-elect, will sign what? The Constitution on June 3rd, 2024. Then there will be a public inauguration of the Sultan on June 8th, where the Sultan will take his oath to the Office of Sultan and pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco Constitution. And now Excalibur, the pen, will be back in the hands of the sovereign. So both the Sultan and the state, right? The Sultan and the state become one. And after that, the Sultan then does what? Okay. Now the Sultan becomes head of state, right? Head of state for the Empire Morocco, then the Sultan does what? Does what? Appoints a prime minister to oversee the executive branch. And then the legislative branch, which is nothing but women, I'll say it again, the legislative branch is 100% nothing but women. The Speaker of the House is a woman. The Searar Council is nothing but women. The entire legislative branch is nothing but women. And then you got the judicial branch. So we'll reinstate the three branches. Now we got a head of state, then we have a head of government, which is Prime Minister. Then we have a head of the legislative branch, then we have a head of the judicial branch, which would be the Chief Judge. You see how we're putting the political? First thing on the board, say what? Political. No, read it from the top. Article 5.
Article 5, indigenous peoples have a right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully, if they so choose, in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state.
Uh huh, this is what we did. That's Article 5. The rights of who indigenous people? Who indigenous people? You got to be specific. It must be particular. Who are they? Moroccans. What's the name of the land? Morocco. What about Morocco? Where is Morocco? It's an empire, right? That's the precise wording of Morocco. It's an empire. Law is precise. It's not ambiguous. This must be understood. So now we can start to help the Moors, right, to return to the Empire Morocco. Who can help the Moors to return to Morocco? Okay, the Sultan. The Sultan now, all the Moors will come under the protections of the Sultan. Everybody come under the protection of His Majesty the Sultan. And His Majesty the Sultan derives his power from what? His Majesty the Sultan derives his power from the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco, because the Constitution is sovereign. Then the Constitution, it represents the state now, and invest sovereignty into the heads of what? The head of state, which is Sultan. And after that, who's up next? The Prime Minister, right? The sovereign state, right, vests the sovereignty into the head of state. And the head of state office is called what? Sultan. So the Sultan now sets up three branches of government. Executive branch for the Prime Minister, who's head of what? Government. Right, then you got the legislative branch that takes care of what? Legal. So your legal, which is your legislation, legal- So your legal, which is your legislation, legal legislation that is ratified, fully ratified by the executive branch. And once the legislative branch and the executive branch fully ratified law, which is legal, now the judicial branch can now have what? What's commonly known as the force of law. To enforce it through the judicial branch. Now we're talking what? Political, legal. You must secure the government and the law before you even start talking about what? Economic, what's listed on the economic? Taxes. The empire Morocco is owed taxes from who? The United States of America is a legal personality. But the legal personality, United States of America, which is the state, is the name on the contract of the treaties to pay taxes to what? The empire Morocco. But the empire Morocco was bored and destitute of what? Political reforms. No political what? Institution. We're restoring the political institution. And we're setting up the legal reforms through what? The institution. That's what? What is the institutions? Okay, here's an institution, executive branch, that's institution. What's another institution? Legislative branch, that's institution. What's another institution? Judicial branch. And all the other institutions underneath the executive branch, which is, what's commonly known as what? The administration. So you got the Trump administration, Obama administration, the Biden administration. So the administration, which is the government, takes care of all the what? Affairs of the state, it's politics. And this is why the United States, on their own foreign policy, say they can have no question. The politics of Morocco. They can have no political question. About the question of Morocco, what about Morocco? It's politics. They said they can't have no political question. Which means they can't question what? The government. Of Morocco. And this is what they've been trying to do to the Moors. They've been preventing the Moors from reestablishing the political government. Because now the government to set up laws, then there is no empire Morocco. It's just a shallow grave. So what if the FBI and the CIA do through the Moorish Science Temple? They say, oh, get these Moors to study what? Divinity. Keep them in what's commonly known as ecclesiastical law, talking about schism between the poet. And the Muslims. And this is what the Moorish Science Temple's been doing, they've been focusing on literature of schism, of holy wars. That's an antiquated mentality. It's an antiquated mentality, that means an old mentality, the whole world has moved on, and it's all about states. And guess who recognized the United States of America? In seventeen eighty nine, the Sultan recognized the United States of America, and George Washington being the first president of the United States of America, seventeen eighty nine. Which was, which was their second constitution, right? So it's the Sultan who recognized the state of the United States of America. The word state is not a new word, it's an old word. And now the Moors have started to understand, we also needed a state, why? Because after nineteen forty five, they created contemporary law, where anyone decolonizing had to establish what? Okay. Listen, rice indigenous people. Rice indigenous people, Article five, Barack Obama wants you to read it. Barack Obama wants you to read it, Article five, said you had to set up what? The life of the state. The Moors needed what? Life of the state. Creates what? Nationality. But the Moors too, they're studying divinity. You know what that is? A treadmill. The worst part is, the Moors started studying United States domestic laws, because the Moors were taught to enforce the constitution of United States of America. The Moors were told that they was the true Americans, they were lied to. The rice indigenous people told you set up what? Your own autonomous, instead of set up autonomous, autonomous functions. That means separate and distinct. How the hell you gonna say you're Americans and United States of America's Americans? Who recognized the United States of America, the thirteen colonies, as being the de jour Americans? It was the Sultan. The Sultan recognized the colonists as being the, the Americans. And these twenty first century Moors turn around and say, oh, we the true Americans, that's a dang on lie. That's a violation of the treaty. The Moors have been deceived. And this is what Barack Obama was trying to tell the Moors, that you've been deceived. Okay, listen. Let, let, let me, let me say this last word about. The Kingdom of Morocco. If you go to their constitution of the year twenty eleven. If you read it, or you use Ctrl F, right? Ctrl find, Ctrl F. Try to find the word empire, and you won't find it. Try to find the word Sultan, you won't find it. Try to find the word Moorish, you won't find it. Try to find the word Moor, you won't find it. The Kingdom of Morocco, in its own constitution, does not recognize the empire, it don't recognize Sultan, and it don't recognize Moors. But yet the Moors are waving a Kingdom of Morocco flag, as if that flag provided them protections. Wrong answer. The King of the King of Morocco don't recognize Moors whatsoever, because their constitution and their legislative acts don't recognize Moors whatsoever. And the Moors don't realize that when Mohammed the fifth stepped down, Mohammed the fifth threw the Moors an alley-oop. Whether the Moors realized it or not. Whether Mohammed the fifth did it on purpose, right? Or whether it's just by default. When Mohammed the fifth steps down, Mohammed the fifth threw an alley-oop to who? The Moors. Threw an alley-oop to the Moors to do what? Take over the seat of Sultan, right? So now we've elected, the Sultan-elect, Abdul Smith Al Khabir. Right, Abdul Smith Al Khabir is the Sultan-elect, because Mohammed the fifth stepped down. They don't recognize the empire no more, there can be no question. Listen to me. The Kingdom of Morocco cannot question the political reforms, the political institution of the empire Morocco, why? Because the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution don't recognize themselves as being what? Moroccans over the empire Morocco, they don't recognize that jurisdiction no more. So they can't even, the King of Morocco and the King of the Kingdom of Morocco can't even question the Moors. The King of the King of Morocco can't even question who the hell is Sultan. They waived their rights. And they was codified by their own consent and ratification of their own constitution. And even Wikipedia recognizes them now as kings. Now they should be respected, but they're not Sultans. That must be understood, they can't even question the political reforms of the empire Morocco. Okay. Listen, Moors, we're talking about the Sultan, because the Moors want to collect taxes from the United States of America, but we need to restore what? Our political, legal institution, right? Which is the state itself, the state, the state, Moors, the state, right? So now that we have a Sultan, now the Moors can do what? Now that we're restoring the state, let's go back to the constitution. Now that we're restoring the state, through the constitution, that's a political reform. Now that we're restoring the Sultan, that's an office, Sultan is an office, but the human being had to sit in the office of Sultan. Now the Moors have a right to do what? Now we go to Treaty Madrid, that talks about a right of protections in Morocco. Right, Madrid Convention of July third, eighteen eighty, right? Now, on Article fifteen, now the Moors can now start to enforce the Treaty of Madrid. To come back to what? The high contracting party. Who's the high contracting party on this treaty? It's the empire Morocco. Noah from the top.
Right of protection in Morocco, July third of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country, and who shall return to Morocco, shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire, and the obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
So now that we're reinstating the constitution, putting together political reforms, right? Now we're, we're doing what? We're emerging as a sovereign, independent state, commonly known as the empire Morocco. Right, so now the Moors can now choose, Moors can choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. What about the laws? Right? What, what laws of the empire? What's the first law? What is the first law of the empire? Right, everybody should know the answer by now, it's what? The constitution. We need a first law of the empire, which is the constitution itself. Since we're trying to decolonize, after nineteen forty five, the Charter of the United Nations says, people who try to decolonize must declare what? Their constitution. Right, let's go back to the Charter of the United Nations. Listen. Charter of the United Nations, chapter eleven, right? Article seventy three E. Article seventy three E, as in echo, says what? Okay, Noah from the top.
E, to transmit regularly to the Secretary General for information purposes, subject to such limitation as security and constitutional considerations may require. Statistical and other information of a technical nature relating to economic, social, and educational conditions in the territories for which they are respectively responsible, other than those territories in which chapters twelve and thirteen apply.
So in Article seventy three E, keep it in mind, when we read Resolution, right? Fifteen forty one, nineteen sixty one. Principle one, when we read it, it said what? This is about what? Colonial type, colonial type of what? Territories and people has been colonized. So Article seventy three is about colonial territories and colonized people. So both the colonized people, the colonized people need a constitution. And the United States of America as a member state has an obligation to let the Secretary General know that the Moors have declared their independence. What's being declared as independent? What's becoming independent? The state, the state is becoming independent, right? The state itself, along with who? The people, right? So we learn in Resolution fifteen fourteen of the year nineteen sixty. It was a, it was a decoration about what? The decoration on the granting of independence for what? Colonial countries and peoples. That's Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty, that's the title. So both the, the land, which is the colonial country, that's the state, and the people have a right to declare what? Independence. So we have to do that with what? A constitution. The constitution for the empire Morocco sets up what? Political. That's the first box, this is what the Moors never understood. The Moors been focusing right here, cultural, cultural, this is where the Moors spent eighty percent of their time, right here, cultural institutions, because they thought that divine was the first thing. Because psychologically speaking, they put divine first, in this sentence of divine and national movement, so they studied divine first. Instead of studying political first. You see what happened to the Moors? They were suckered. The Moors were suckered to study divine first. Instead of studying political first. This is what the Moors got to understand, I know the Moors are sensitive, but I'm telling you the truth. The truth is right in front of your face, and Barack Obama is trying to help you. Okay, going back, okay, going back to Article fifteen. We're talking the government of the empire Morocco, and the Moors want to collect taxes, because taxes is a form of reparations, and reparations is a generic word for what? Restitution and compensation, right? But in order for the Moors to collect taxes, what do we have to do first? We have to follow the instructions of Article fifteen. But Article fifteen was about what? What, what was Article fifteen about? How is it that we ended up with a Sultan? That's my question. How, 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 how did we end up with a Sultan? It's because good brother Abdul Smith Bay decided to now return to Morocco and became Sultan Abdul Smith Al Khabir, but how did he do that? How could good brother Abdul become Sultan? It's because he followed the instructions, and what he did is, he returned, he returned to Morocco, he returned. And when he returned to Morocco, he returned back to what? He returned back to a government, a Moors, a Moors government, right? A Moors government, and then, and then, once he returned to a Moors government, several Moroccan internal provincial governments started to turn around and put back together what? The empire through the WRC organization, and then from there, we established the constitution for the empire Morocco. But you must understand that good brother Abdul, just like all the rest of the Moors, had to first follow the instructions of the treaty, and he returned, he returned to Morocco. The other Moors haven't done it. Tajri Bay hasn't followed these instructions. Rasmoraya Bay hasn't followed these instructions. Light Bay hasn't followed these instructions. None of the Moors have been following these instructions. Abdullah Il Taliq Mosi Bay, coming on his duty, hasn't followed these instructions. Unfortunately, good brother Abdullah is still what? A naturalized Moor. Abdullah's what? Abdullah's still a subject of Morocco, and he's still what? Naturalized. So the Moors are still what? Colonized. But not the Moors who followed the instructions and returned to Morocco. This must be understood, listen. What does naturalized mean? We gotta talk about this, because the Moors now have a right to do what? Come back to empire Morocco, because we have a constitution, and we're reinstating what? The politics of the what? Institutions. So now the Moors have been naturalized in what? The Moors have been naturalized in what? A foreign country. The Moors have been naturalized in a foreign country, for example, since it's a multilateral treaty, we use the United States of America as an example. So the Moors have been naturalized in a foreign country called the United States of America, which is called a jurisdiction. It's layers and layers and layers and layers of jurisdiction, alright? So naturalization, we found out it meant what? The Moors are what? Adopted. Adopted by who? A foreign country called the United States of America. Listen, so if the Moors were adopted, listen, that means the Moors became what? The Moors became a war of the state. What do I have up here? This is Blackfall Dictionary. Fourth edition. Naturalization means what? Adoption, listen, before we read definition of war, listen. Moors gotta learn this. What, what does adoption mean? Okay, Noah from the top, this is a reference point. This is Cornell Law School, okay? We're gonna read the definition of adoption, so the Moors get a basic understanding of it, alright? From here.
Adoption. Adoption refers to the act where an adult formally becomes the guardian of a child and incurs the rights and obligations of a parent at the conclusion of the formal process. A legal relationship between child and guardian will have formed. The legal relationship results in the adoptee becoming the legal heir of the adopter, and terminates any legal rights then in existence with the natural parents. Although adoptions have historically fallen within the sphere of state authority, Congress has used the spending power to garner some influence over state adoption programs. Under this program, Congress grants money to the states to carry out their programs if they abide by certain congressional mandates.
Pause. Okay, so that's adoption, listen, from the top.
Types of adoptions. While certain jurisdictions only permit one of the two types of adoptions, other jurisdictions recognize two types of adoptions, open and closed adoption. Most cases in which parental rights are terminated occur because of a consensual forfeiture of those rights by parents. Generally, a parent cannot revoke a consensual forfeiture. Open adoption. An open adoption permits the birth mother to select her child's adoptive parents. Some jurisdictions also permit the parents in an open adoption to maintain their visitation and contract rights. Closed adoption. A closed adoption meanwhile results in the birth mother relinquishing all rights over to, over, over the child and allowing over, over the child and allows a state administrative agency conduct the selection process.
Pause. So adoption is broke down into two subsections. The Moors end up becoming adopted by the United States of America. This is why they call minorities. What does minority means? You're a minor. And the minors have been adopted by who? The parent. The parent what? The parent state. The parent state was the United States of America who adopted the Moors and made the Moors Americans. The Americans are the redheaded stepchild of the United States of America as an example. And the Moors are the redheaded stepchild who were adopted by several European states all across the Empire Morocco. However, the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, is what type of adoption status? Is what you call an open adoption. What is open adoption? Okay. An open adoption permits the birth mother, which is the Empire Morocco, to select her child's adopted parents. So the Sultan allows the United States of America and other European states to adopt the Moors under naturalization. So the Sultan signed bilateral and multilateral treaties with the European states. And the Sultan chose, chose to allow those Europeans who signed the treaty, such as the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. The Sultan chose who, what mother states would be able to adopt the Moors. And what's commonly known as an open adoption. So it continues to read, some jurisdictions also permit, right? The parent in an open adoption to maintain their visitation and contact rights. See, that's open. So when the Sultan signed the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, left it as an open adoption for two reasons. One, the Sultan selected who the adoptor was going to be. So the United States of America as an example, under Article fifteen, the Sultan chose the foreign country, such as the United States of America as an example, and gave the United States of America a right, a treaty right to naturalize, i.e. adopt, who? The subjects of Morocco, which was who? The Moors. But as an open adoption provision, why? Because the Sultan always had jurisdiction over Moors subjects. However, the Sultan also wrote in paragraph one that the adopted Moors could always do what? Return to Morocco, which is return back to who? Your biological mother. So it's what you call an open adoption. It was left open-ended and the onus, listen to me. The onus was placed on who? The Moors. It was the Moors' obligation to return to Morocco. It was the Moors' obligation to choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. That was on the Moors. Once they became of proper age and proper mentality and understood that they were Moroccans, Nobodrali came to us in nineteen thirteen and said, we're descendants of Moroccans. He was trying to enforce the treaties to get the Moors to understand that Moroccans, they turned around and assassinated Noble and came out after that and said, no, we're Americans. This is what happened. Noble never said we were descendants of America. He said, we're descendants of Moroccans and the next you know, he gets assassinated. And these foolish Moors and grand sheiks come out here and tell all the people that they're Americans. When Noble said, we're Moroccans. And the Moroccans have a right under an open adoption status of naturalization because naturalization means adopted. So this is an open adoption reform that's expressed in a treaty. It's not closed. It's not closed adoption. It's open adoption. Now do you understand? Listen to me, Moors. Now do you understand why the United States was so desperate to try to strike Article fifteen from the Treaty of Madrid? The Moors must understand Article fifteen was the most important article out of one hundred and sixty-six articles. Where do I get one hundred and sixty-six articles from? Well, the Treaty of what? The Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six has twenty-five articles. The Madrid Convention has eighteen articles. The Act of Oursers has what? One hundred and twenty-three articles. If you add all those articles up, it's one hundred and sixty-six articles. What's the most important article out of one hundred and sixty-six articles? It's Article fifteen, paragraph one of the Madrid Convention of July third, eighteen eighty. And since the Moors knew nothing about this portal, then the Moors could never return and enforce all one hundred and sixty-six articles. Without this article, there is no Moors. All the Moors were listed as what? Former Moors, but they were all naturalized. The Moors got to understand this. So the Moors were put under what? Protection. Protection in Morocco. What type of protection? Naturalization under adoption. So adoption was the protection. The Moors were from the adoption agency. An open adoption. Listen. What does adoption mean? Okay, Noble, adoption.
Adoption refers to the act where an adult formally becomes the guardian of a child and incurs the rights and obligations of a parent. At the conclusion of the formal process, a legal relationship between child and guardian will have formed.
All right. So an adoption agency, the United States of America became what? A guardian. Listen, this is important. Listen, Moors. Because we gotta understand what happened to us. The Moors end up having a guardian who became a parent state. So the parent state, the United States of America, ended up becoming a guardian over the Moors because the Moors all got adopted. Listen. Now let's go to Black Law Dictionary, fourth edition. So therefore, under ward, the ward, the Moors became wards of the state. What state? The United States of America and the several chartered states. Noble, highlight there.
Ward. Guarding, care, and charge.
Uh huh. So ward, what's a ward? Guarding, care, charge. So the United States of America ended up being a ward. They were the guardians. They were providing care and they were in charge of who? The adopted Moors. Listen. Under ward, noble.
A person, especially an infant, placed by authority of law under the care of a guardian.
Uh huh. So under wardship status is a person, especially an infant, placed by authority of law, under the care of a guardian. So the Moors, under the Madrid Convention, Article fifteen, were naturalized. Naturalized meaning we were adopted. So therefore, we were put in the care of the United States of America. We came under their civil and criminal jurisdiction because it became what? Then the mother, the parent, right? Our adopted mother ended up adopting us under naturalization. We were adopted. Now we came under wardship status. We were wards of the state. And they ended up becoming guardians, right? They ended up becoming guardians. Guardians over who? Over who? What? The infant. What's an infant? A minor. This is why they call our people minorities. Why they call us minorities? Because we're still under what? A guardian status. No matter how old you are, whether you're, you're two years old or twenty-two or thirty-two or forty-two or sixty-two or eighty-two, you're still a minority because you're still under the guardianship of the United States of America. As a minor. Why they call you a minor? Because you're still adopted. You're the redheaded stepchild of the United States of America. You're adopted. And this is why they call all the quote-unquote black people minors. Because you're still under guardianship status. And this is why the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, the top of it says what? It says right of protections in Morocco. It gave what? It gave, it gave the United States of America and other European states the right to protect the Moors in Morocco under adoption status. And the Moors ended up in a wardship status. And this is what happened to us. Who, who signed the contract? The Sultan. The Sultan allowed us to be adopted. But the Sultan also said in Article fifteen, paragraph one, and this is why the United States is going out of their way to commit crimes against humanity. They, they want to strike Article fifteen to make sure the Moors can then use it as a portal to return to Morocco. So the Sultan said, yeah, these Moors can be adopted under what's commonly known as an open adoption. But these Moors have a right to return to Morocco. And this is what the Sultan did. This is what the Sultan did. The Sultan followed the instructions. Good brother Abdul Smith Al Khair was a subject of Morocco. He was naturalized. He returned to the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco. And then he ran for office to do what? Be Sultan. Just that easy. It's just that easy. Look at this timeline. This is ninety-five years since Noble been gone. And this is all the Moors had to do is follow instructions. They didn't do it. They didn't do it. They were sold out. Speaking of naturalization. I, I, I got something up here for the Moors. Moors, you gotta pay attention. Please pay attention. What is this? This is the expatriation document. The expatriation of nineteen oh six. This is Hoffman Philip, you know, talking about Morocco on page four fifty-nine and four sixty. All the Moors know about the expatriation document. But they don't read it. They read two pages, page four fifty-nine and four sixty, and that's it. And all the words they see is ipso jure Moors subject. But they never comprehended, never interpreted what was going on with the fact the Moors have been naturalized. Because they didn't know the Moors were adopted. If you've been adopted, then what's your biological mother's name? It's called Morocco, which makes you what? By nationality, what? Moroccan. But who's got to recognize you as Moroccan? The state. The state has to recognize you. That's the SAW. But the Empire Morocco's in a shallow grave after nineteen fifty-six. We have to restore the politics, which is the government, so we can self-govern, right? Now listen. This is about Turkey. It's about, we're gonna read seven pages. All right? I don't know how long this is gonna take us, but we're gonna get through it tonight. Seven pages. This is about Turkey because Turkey was what? The Ottoman Empire, right? Turkey took over, what's commonly known as the Middle East, right? So we're gonna read about Turkey. Why are we reading about Turkey? Because Turkey talks about in their law, naturalization. They talk about nationality. They talk about the laws of Turkey, of the Ottoman Empire. And we gotta learn from this. The Moors don't read. They skim everything. But we gotta read. What was Turkey and the United States of America talking about? When it came to naturalization? When it came to adoption? So what we're gonna do real fast, okay? What we're gonna do? This is page five twenty-five. So what we're gonna do is first, we're gonna work it backwards. It's seven pages. We're gonna get through this tonight. We're gonna go to page five twenty-nine, okay? Five twenty-nine. I'm gonna work it backwards. Okay? What do I wanna show you on page five twenty-nine first? Right? Something you need to know, understand real fast before we start to read. Because I'm reading this for a reason. This is what the Moors wasn't studying. The Moors wasn't doing no research. The Moors took in the reading literature because they reading all the Moors books, all these Moors and wasting time reading books. And all the answers to the test is free on Google. They buying books. Wasting time writing books and reading books when they should have been reading what? Law. This is about Turkey, the Ottoman Empire. And all the Moors know about the Ottoman Empire, but I bet they never took the time to read about Turkey. This is public information. Expatriation document. So look at this last sentence. Noble, read this. Keep in mind, this is about naturalization. And Ottoman Empire was talking to the United States of America about this. This last sentence is right here.
It should be remarked that these people have no nationality from the date when they abandoned their Ottoman allegiance to that when they obtained naturalization in the country of their adoption.
Read again.
It should be, it should be remarked that these people have no nationality from the date when they abandoned their Ottoman allegiance to that when they obtained naturalization in the country of their adoption.
So even the Ottoman Empire was saying that anybody who was no longer a national of the Ottoman Empire was adopted. Adopted by a foreign country. You see that? This is the expatriation document of nineteen oh six, talking about the word adoption. The Moors gotta understand this. If you're not a national of your state, of the Empire Morocco, that means you are what? Adopted by a foreign state. The Moors Americans are adopted, naturalized, adopted people of the United States of America. Even the Ottoman Empire was talking about this. If anybody from the Ottoman Empire is in a foreign country, then they gonna get, end up becoming naturalized, i.e. what? Adopted. And become a national of that foreign country. You no longer got Ottoman nationality, now you got American nationality. Even though your blood pedigree is Ottoman. Now your political status is American because America adopted you. And the Moors aren't taught that they were adopted. Same things happen when these people think they're Indians. You go to the eighteen sixty-six treaties of who? You can look at the Cherokee Nation, right? The Cree Nation, the Seminoles, the Cho-Cho and the Chickasaw Nation. If you look at the eighteen sixty-six treaties between those nations, the United States of America, they keep saying the freedmen were what? Adopted. You ain't Indian because you were adopted in the Cherokee Nation. That don't, that means you ain't Cherokee. This word adoption is everywhere when you start talking about naturalization. Naturalization and adoption are synonymous. Look. Naturalization, naturalization, adoption. Adoption, naturalization. And the Moors, Moors American grand sheiks have never told the Moors this. The Moors were adopted as American. You ain't American. You're Moroccan. Okay, now we worked it backwards. We, we gonna read these seven pages, okay? We gotta get through this. This is important for the Moors to know. All right, we're talking Turkey. What is this about? Naturalization. Naturalization means what? You've been adopted. So now we're gonna learn about Ottoman nationality, right? Because the state of the Ottoman state of Turkey has a nationality of being Turkey. Now remember now, they, they was writing this in nineteen oh six about Turkey. And Ottoman, the government of the Ottoman Empire was talking about Ottoman nationality. We gotta learn about this, okay? All right, from the top. Noble.
Citizenship of the United States, expatriation, et cetera, page five twenty-five. Turkey. Translation of the Ottoman Law of Nationality of eighteen sixty-nine. Article one.
Pause. So what should we learn around the top? It says translation of Ottoman law of nationality of eighteen sixty-nine. So the Ottoman Empire had laws of the empire, the Ottomans, eighteen sixty-nine. They started enforcing laws. So what we can read, what we can read is what? Law of Ottoman Empire. So the Moors Americans down here, they got no dang on law. But they keep claiming they're SAW with no law. Because that's called what? Private law of their churches. Private law of their organizations. Private law of their corporations. That's private law, not public law of a what? State. So we're gonna read what? Public law of a state. So what should we learn from this? The Sultan, right? The Sultan Abdul Smith Al Khair, who Sultan-elect, until he takes his oath, right? On June eighth, twenty twenty-four, the Sultan-elect, along with who? Listen. The Empire Morocco has now learned from what we're getting ready to read about Turkey because Turkey has a law. So let's now read what Turkey was saying about nationality and naturalization and adoption. So the Empire Morocco needs to learn from what we about to read about Turkey because the United States of America was looking at whose laws? The Ottoman Empire's laws. Now, what should the Moors and the Empire Morocco learn? Learn? Learn from Turkey's law? Got it? Okay, here we go. Okay, from here.
Translation of the Ottoman Law of Nationality of eighteen sixty-nine. Article one. Persons born at a time when their parents or only father are of Ottoman nationality are considered Ottoman subjects. Article two. Any person born in the Imperial Dominions Ottoman Empire at a time when his or her parents are of foreign nationality can, by right, within three years beginning with the date of his or her majority, claim Ottoman nationality.
Alright, so once you become an adult, you can claim Ottoman nationality. Okay? It's all about nationality, okay? You gotta claim it from who? The state. Remember, this is law from a state. This ain't somebody just walking around tomorrow, I can, I can be just declare my nationality. No, you can't. The state was extending nationality to the person seeking to be recognized by what? The state. And the state's what? Legal law. You see? Alright.
Article three. A foreigner of age who has lived in the Ottoman Empire consecutively for five years can obtain Ottoman nationality by submitting personally or through intermediary a petition to the Department of Foreign Affairs. Article four. The Imperial Ottoman Government extraordinarily receives into its allegiance foreigners as well, whom it considers to be worthy of an exceptional favor, even should they not have fulfilled the conditions prescribed in the preceding article. Article five. Persons who, being authorized, enter from Ottoman into a foreign nationality are from the date when they change their nationality, considered as foreign subjects and treated as such.
Read that again. Article five.
Article five. Persons who, being authorized, enter from Ottoman into a foreign nationality are from the date when they change their nationality, considered as foreign subjects and treated as such.
So what's happening here? Article five, this is Ottoman laws. Keep that in mind. Article five says persons who being authorized, enter from Ottoman into a foreign nationality. So you go from Ottoman nationality to becoming a citizen United States of America. As an example. Are from the date when they change their nationality, considered as foreign subjects and treated as such. So the persons who used to be Ottoman nationality, now American, have American nationality, and now the Ottoman Empire treated that ex-Ottoman national as what? A foreigner. Why is that important to understand? Cause the Moors Americans are still listed as what? Moors subjects that's been naturalized, now they got the nationality of being American. Now the Empire Morocco gotta look at those subjects as what? Foreigners. So Moors Americans are listed as foreigners because they're still what? Naturalized, they've been adopted as Americans. And I know the Moors Americans don't wanna hear this truth, but you gotta understand what you're reading here. This goes back to Article fifteen of Treaty Madrid. If you now been naturalized, you're American now. You're no longer Moroccan. You gotta come back and pledge allegiance back to the Empire Morocco, or you still considered what? A foreign subject. You see right here, you're considered now a foreign foreign subject. This is how the Ottomans was looking at. We, we as Moroccans gotta learn how the Ottomans were setting up their law. We gotta learn from them. Alright? I know the Moors Americans don't wanna hear this, but you need to hear this, cause you gotta understand why you gotta get the heck out of the jurisdiction, United States of America, because you're considered as American, you're a foreigner. Cause you're listed as American. It's just that simple. Okay, from the top.
Article five. Persons who, being authorized, enter from Ottoman into a foreign nationality are from the date when they change their nationality, considered as foreign subjects and treated as such. But if he or she should enter into a foreign nationality without being authorized by the Imperial Ottoman Government, his or her, new nationality shall be considered as null and void. And he or she shall be considered as an Ottoman subject as before. And in every matter, he or she shall be treated exactly as Ottoman.
Pause. So what's happening? And let's say, Moroccans returned to Morocco. Now they wanna go back over there to be a naturalized American, back in the jurisdiction, United States of America. Guess who permission they gotta get? The Moroccan Empires. Permission. This is what we gotta learn from the Ottomans. The Ottoman Government saying, if you wanna return to be a naturalized American again, then you gotta give permission to Moroccan government to go back into a naturalized status. But if you try to go back over there and become a naturalized American again, without the permission, express permission, then that, that, whatever it is you doing to claim yourself as American again, is null and void, right? So it says right here. The nationality shall be considered as null and void if you're claiming to be American after you pledged your allegiance to be Moroccan again. You see what's happening? This is what we gotta learn from the Ottomans. Alright? Okay, right here.
In any case, the abandonment by an Ottoman subject of his or her nationality depends on an instrument to be granted in virtue of an imperial irate.
Uh huh. So, right here, it says, in any case, the abandonment by an Ottoman subject of his or her nationality depends on an instrument to be granted in virtue of an imperial irate. So the, the, the Ottoman Empire's laws says the Ottoman Government has to grant permission for that Ottoman national to be considered a foreign national of a foreign state. So the Ottoman national wants to be now American national, they gotta get permission from the Ottoman Government. This is what the Empire Morocco's gotta learn. We gotta set forth these laws. Okay?
Article six. If the Ottoman Empire should so wish it can reject from its sub- subjection the person who, without authorization from the Imperial Ottoman Government, changes his nationality in a foreign country or enters into the military service of a foreign government, the return into the Imperial Dominions, the Ottoman Empire, of persons of this category whose nationality has been rejected is forbidden.
Continue.
Article seven. The woman who, while an Ottoman subject, marries a foreigner may return to her original nationality if, within three years following the date of her husband's death, she petitions for it. The provision of this article applies to the person. The matter of ownership of mooc and arazi property is subject to the general laws and regulations.
Alright, so if a Moroccan woman marries an American citizen, then she's gotta give permission now to be recognized as Moroccan again, because if she marries an American, she automatically now comes under American jurisdiction. But she, if, if the husband dies, she gets to petition the Moroccan government again to be recognized as Moroccan again. So this is what we gotta learn. These are basic laws that the Ottomans put in place. It doesn't mean the Empire Morocco have to use the strict language of this, but we gotta understand the basic understanding of this. Right? This is really good information. Okay? Article eight.
Article eight. The children, even if they should be minors of persons who have changed their Ottoman nationality or have been deprived of it, do not follow the nationality of their fathers, but remain Ottoman subjects. And the children of the foreigner who has entered into the Ottoman nationality, even if they should be minors, do not follow the nationality of their fathers, but are considered as foreigners.
Okay, so let's read that again. Article eight, the children, even if they should be minors of persons who have changed their Ottoman nationality or have been deprived of it, do not follow the nationality of their fathers, but to remain Ottoman subjects. And the children of the foreigners who has entered into the Ottoman nationality, even if they should be minors, do not follow the nationality of their fathers, but are considered as foreigners. So you gotta understand up here, the father's not carrying the nationality if in fact they become a national of a different foreign state. So the fathers have to be careful as we start studying these laws. If the fathers wanna become Americans and that child can't be born as what? Moroccan. You gotta be careful. We gotta, we gotta study this. Okay, article nine.
Article nine. Every person inhabiting the Imperial Dominions is considered as an Ottoman subject and treated as an Ottoman subject. If he or she is a foreign subject, it is necessary for him or her to prove it in a regular manner.
So, so if you're an Ottoman national, you gotta prove it. Where's your identification? You see? This is what Moroccans gotta learn. How do you prove it to Moroccan? Well, the Moroccan state has to give you state ID from the Empire Morocco. This is how you prove protections under the Empire Morocco and its state and its what? Political government. Okay?
Although it is not within the scope of the present memorandum to study every aspect of the conceptions of nationality underlying the Muslim sharia law, its influence can nonetheless be traced in the drafting of the Present Ottoman Law of Nationality. The extraterritorial privileges known under the general name of capitulations or treaty rights and enjoyed by the great majority of non-Ottoman residents of the Ottoman Empire are well-known.
Pause. So what did we learn here? Nationality about the Present Ottoman Law of Nationality. Let me say it again. Can we read about the, the Turkey government? Present Ottoman Law of Nationality. Let me ask you a question. Where's the Moors Americans' laws regarding nationality? It don't exist. Why? Because they ain't got no states. They have no legislative branch to enact laws. So how the hell you keep saying you're a Moors American of nationality, when there's no Moors American laws that recognizes nationality? And I don't wanna hear this crap about no church bylaws. Whereas the states, it don't exist. Why? Cause there's no such thing as Moors American. It's a compound adjective. Our nationality is what? Moroccan. Our nationality ain't never been Moors American, and this is why they ain't got no Moors American laws. Cause only a state can enact laws. But then, then they just stole, they just stole all this money from the black community. People, they tell people, oh, you ain't black. You're Moors American. So give me some money and I'll recognize you as a true American. This is what they done. Listen to what I'm saying. Moors Americans have been hustling people for years. Yeah, man, give me some money. Give me some notes. And I'll give you some paperwork that says you're American. But the black person, listen to me, cause people call themselves black. You telling this black person they ain't black, and you telling them to get some, some packages that say they're American, when they was already American, even when they was black. They was already American. The United States of America already recognized blacks as listed on the census as who? Americans. And then Moors American, Temple Moors and City Moors turn around and sold some packages to these very black people who were already listed as Americans, the package selling Moors turn around and sold them some packages that what? You're a true American. Boy, I tell you, these Moors Americans have hustled, they done hustled well. They just sold water to a well and ice to an Eskimo. You was already American, and the Moors Americans sold you some packages that says you're American, and you gave them notes. You gave them money, three hundred dollars, a thousand notes. You done took classes to teach you that you're American. The United States of America already recognized you as American. And the Moors Americans turn around and say, these Europeans ain't the real Americans. You know why they was saying that? Because the grand sheiks never told them, go back and read the treaties. Grand sheiks don't read treaties out loud. They don't read the preambles. They don't recognize it's two separate parties in the treaties. There's Moroccans and Americans. They, they, they just sold these, they done hustled the people and sold them packages to say that they're Americans, and the people was already Americans that were adopted as Americans. Boy, I tell you, it's a lot of hustle going on. The hustle game is real amongst our people. Carnivores. Okay? So back to the point. The Ottomans had laws. Laws of what? Their state. Turkey was recognized as a state. So the state created laws that then set up what? Reforms regarding what? Nationality. That's what we're doing. We're setting up a state through our laws, right, which is legal of the government. We're getting there. We'll learn from these laws. We can learn something from the Ottomans. You see? How they dealt with nationality and naturalization. Okay, let's try to get through this.
The extraterritorial privileges known under the general name of capitulations or treaty rights and enjoyed by the great majority of non-Ottoman residents of the Ottoman Empire are well-known. At a time when the non-Muslims, subject of the empire were not in not on an equal footing with their Mohammedan fellow subjects, it was natural for the former to look with envy at the superior legal position enjoyed by foreign subjects in Turkey. In a country where theology and law, as well as religion and nationality were often confused, a Christian Ottoman subject of the Sublime Porte would endeavor to find the means to enjoy the same rights and immunities as were enjoyed by the Christian subject of some Western power.
Pause. Do, do you see what the Ottomans said about nationality and religion? Look, look what they said about, when you try to intermix nationality and religion. What happens when you try to intermix? Religion and nationality were often what? Confused. Right? Religion and nationality were often confused. It created what? Confusion. So when you mix this divide and national movement, you're creating what? Confusion. This is what the Ottomans were saying. In their laws from eighteen sixty-nine. Then when you mix religion and nationality, we're often confused. It's confusion. This is what Moors gotta learn from even the Ottomans. This was eighteen sixty-nine in writing this. And we're in here in twenty twenty-four, and these Moors are still maintaining confusion under this divide and national movement, which is a treadmill of confusion. We're talking facts here. I'm reading law out loud. Right here.
In a country where theology and laws, as well as religion and nationality were often confused.
Pause. Read again.
In a country where theology and law, as well as religion and nationality were often confused.
Pause. So what does that mean? You, you mixing law, nationality, theology, and state laws, it's intermixed, it becomes what? A mishmash. So therefore, you gotta, you gotta do what? You gotta separate what? You gotta separate what? Church and state. They must be separated, cause it creates what? Confusion. Even the Ottomans knew this in eighteen sixty-nine. Wouldn't the Moors during in the twenty-first century, in the year twenty twenty-four, still intermixing this mishmash called divide and national movement? But the Ottomans knew in eighteen sixty-nine, it creates confusion. Moors don't study. This is public law. From nineteen oh six. The United States of America was talking about the Ottoman's laws from eighteen sixty-nine, and the Moors ain't even learned nothing even from this. Read again.
Okay. In a country where theology and law, as well as religion and nationality were often confused, a Christian Ottoman subject of the Sublime Porte would endeavor to find the means to enjoy the same rights and immunities as were enjoyed by the Christian subject of some Western power. For in his own mind, the question of subjection seemed identical with that of religion.
You see how religion is creating confusion? Versus what? State law. So you got state law, and you got religious law. So that's what? That got state law, which is public law. Then you got religious law, which is ecclesiastical private law. So public law comes from the state, and private law comes from churches. And what's happening is they were being intermixed. It created confusion. Cause like, okay, are we going with ecclesiastical law, private law of some religion? Or we going with state law of Turkey? It created confusion. Cause religions create confusion, and this is why they turn around and say, you know what? We gotta separate what? Church and state. Cause it's creating confusion. There must be state. There must be state, public law, and there must be church, private law. They made the distinction. Which one's supreme? State law. Which one's inferior? Church law. You see? And Moors don't know the distinction. They keep trying to tell you about literature. That's what? Church law. Because they don't know the distinction between private law and public law, because they ain't never been taught nothing about statehood, which is public law.
The stronger Western powers protected not only their own subjects in Turkey, but those as well as other, those as well of other and smaller countries. Gradually, the representatives of foreign countries protected in Turkey certain Ottoman subjects as well. This protection, which culminated in naturalization or nationalization or naturalization, was not suddenly imposed on the Sublime Porte in its entirety. The capitulations were there, or else in course of formation, and the interpretations and extensions to which they gave rise were ready for application, backed and strengthened by precedent. In conformity with the capitulations of fifteen sixty-nine, the interpreters of the French ambassadors were protected by being exempt from all subsides at imports. By the year of seventeen forty, this protection was practically extended not only to all employees of all the diplomatic missions, but even to those of the consulates. For certain, for certain diplomatic and concert officers, this word, genuine employees and servants of every kind. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a line. For certain diplomatic and concert officers, this word employees was taken in so broad a sense that it included not only genuine employees and servants of every kind, but even friends who might be in need of protection. In addition to real diplomatic and consular officers, there was thus added a class of wealthy, non-Muslim subjects of the Sultan, to whom were granted the titles of Venetian, French, Dutch, or English consuls, and who were protected by their respective diplomatic missions, and in turn protected their own employees with their families. To these were, again, added certain merchants called Bertals, Bertalis, Bertalis, as well as agents and brokers dealing with or for foreigners. So that in the eighteenth century, there was a large and increasing number of native subjects of the Porte who, without obtaining foreign nationality, were yet partakers of the general extraterritorial privileges enjoyed by foreigners. This was followed in the nineteenth century by wholesale nationality, naturalizations granted by some representatives of certain powers, not only to proteges, but even to non-Muslim.
Muslim.
Muslim subjects of the Porte who had never been outside the frontiers of the empire. This unfortunate state of affairs could only cause difficulties and complications for the Ottoman government, and the Sublime Porte searched for a remedy in order to strike at the root of all these abuses. It therefore not only opened energetic and successful diplomatic negotiations with certain of the embassies with a view to putting an end to the system of abusive protection and naturalization, but by a wise policy, decided to place all Ottoman subjects irrespective of religion on an equal footing, knowing that in this way, its non-Muslim subjects, Muslims subjects would not be so anxious to obtain foreign protection. When by the Treaty of Paris of eighteen fifty-six, the powers admitted Turkey to participate in the advantages of European public law and in the Concert of Nations, they could not thereafter allow the continuation of the abuses of the former system of European protection and naturalization. In eighteen sixty, the Sublime Porte adopted certain regressive measures against Ottoman subjects who attempted to change their nationality while residing in Turkey. In eighteen sixty-three, a special convention was signed with Russia, and in the same year was published the Regulation in Regard to Foreign Consulates in Turkey, which limited foreign protection to Ottoman subjects in the actual service of consulates and certain missionary establishments or foreign monasteries. The number of such proteges who may be employed by consulates or in such ecclesiastical establishments is fixed by this regulation, which it was agreed would have no retroactive effect. The ground was now prepared for the elaboration of a law of nationality, the one whereof the translation is enclosed. It was first promulgated on the nineteenth of January of eighteen sixty-nine and communicated to the foreign missions in Constantinople in February of the same year. The missions were not at first disposed to accept the law on the ground that their consent was not obtained before its promulgation. But the Sublime Porte pointed out that as the law would have no retroactive effect, any person who had already obtained a foreign nationality before its promulgation would be considered as a foreign subject, so that the law could affect none but Ottoman subjects whose regulations of allegiance with their own government were established by it. In other words, the Sublime Porte considered and the missions finally admitted that this was a matter entirely of internal administration. We thus see what the circumstances were, which led to the drafting of the present law and why the Ottoman legislator is careful to lay down as a principle that in no case can an Ottoman subject change its nationality without previously obtaining permission from his sovereign.
Pause. Read that again.
We thus see what the circumstances which were led to the drafting of the present law and why the Ottoman legislator is careful to lay down as a principle that in no case can an Ottoman subject change his nationality without previously obtaining permission from his sovereign.
So, so that paragraph that I have highlighted, so Moroccans cannot become foreigners. They cannot go and get like dual citizenship. They can't become the nationals of somebody, somebody else's foreign territory. This would be Ottomans were saying, not without express permission of the Ottoman government according to their Ottoman laws. And this is what the Empire Morocco have to understand. We have to enact laws that says, once you, once you become Moroccan again, you pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco, you can no longer gain foreign nationality of being American or Canadian or British or French. You can't be a national of any other state on planet Earth without the express permission of the government. You see? Now, keep in mind, the Sultan of Morocco in eighteen eighty gave the several Union States permission to adopt the Moors through a treaty of eighteen eighty, multilateral treaty. However, when the Moors return to Morocco, they can't go back to another naturalized status. And this is good news, right? They gotta get permission to be naturalized again. All right, let's continue.
The law of eighteen sixty-nine can now be examined article by article. Article one, in quotes, "Person born at a time when their parents or only father are of Ottoman nationality are considered Ottoman subjects," end of quote.
Pause. Read again.
Article one, in quote, "Persons born at a time when their parents or only father are of Ottoman nationality are considered Ottoman subjects," end of quote.
All right, so the father can produce children that are Ottoman subjects. Okay, but it says, article one, persons born at a time when their parents or only father are of Ottoman nationality are considered Ottoman subjects. So now that changed the law, eighteen sixty-nine, so okay, fathers can create Ottoman subjects, i.e. Ottoman nationals. So the bloodline, the nationality was carried through an Ottoman father. Okay? So from the top, it says, "Persons born at a time when their parents or only father are Ottoman national are considered Ottoman subjects." Ottoman nationals, you see? This is eighteen sixty-nine. Continue.
This declares the principle that all persons irrespective of their place of birth or of residence follow the nationality of their fathers.
Read again.
This declares the principle that all persons irrespective of their place of birth or of residence follow the nationality of their fathers.
Means that no matter where the fathers were creating children on planet Earth, the nationality of the fathers traveled to the child. This is what's happening with the Ottoman. Okay? Okay, article two.
Article two, in quote, "Any person born in the Imperial Dominions Ottoman Empire at a time when his or her parents are of foreign nationality can, by right, within three years, beginning with the date of his or her majority, claim Ottoman nationality," end of quote.
All right, so once a child becomes an adult, they can go and petition to become an Ottoman national. Okay, continue.
The same principle is true not only in the case of Ottoman subjects born outside the Ottoman Empire, but also in that of persons born in Turkey of foreign parents. Only in case such persons should desire to become Ottoman subjects, the law grants them certain facilities which foreigners born outside of the Empire do not enjoy. The age of majority in this case is fixed by the laws of the country of which the applicant's father is a subject.
All right, so what is this all about? It's all about, once again, it's about what? The law. What did we learn from this move? Yes, I know it's about nationality and naturalization, but it's about what? Fixed, right? Fixed by the laws of the country. Moors never had laws. They love talking about nationality, had no nationality laws. Why didn't Moors have nationality laws? Because they were stateless claiming to be Moors. They were now American. Claiming to be Moorish Americans, claiming not to be citizens of the United States of America. So Moorish Americans were saying it wasn't citizen of the United States. Okay, then tell me the name of the state that you were citizen of, and tell me the name of the laws. What laws does that state have on the books regarding nationality? You gotta understand what I'm saying. The Moors were never in the possession, Moorish Americans, I should say, were never in the possession of law, because they were absolutely stateless under the political word of Moorish American. But the reality is their true nationality was Moroccan, and no dry lead trying to tell everybody they were descendants of Moroccan. Not no dang old Moorish American. That's not a nationality. So this is all about what? Fixed by the laws of the country, i.e. fixed by the laws of the state. What type of state? The empire. So right now, we're talking about Turkey's empire, but we also have to look at this and reflect on this, okay? What would the Empire Morocco write? Similar laws, similar, not equivalent, but similar. We can learn from this, right? What did we learn? It's about laws of the state. This is what Moors don't understand. We have to write laws through the legislative branch. Okay. Article three.
Article three, in quote, "A foreigner of age who has lived in the Ottoman Empire consecutively for five years can obtain Ottoman nationality by submitting personally or through intermediary a petition to the Department of Foreign Affairs," end of quote. The same remark about the age of majority holds true of this article. Certain rules are, however, observed in the case of foreigners who have become naturalized Ottomans, which are applicable as well to persons who come within the category of those mentioned in Articles two and three. Foreigners belonging to these classes who seek Ottoman naturalization must first produce a certificate from the consulate to which they belong stating that the applicant has not deserted from the military service of his country and that no criminal prosecution has been instituted against him.
All right, that's if, if someone wants to become naturalized by the Empire Morocco, they can petition for the Empire Morocco to provide them with a naturalized status to become Moroccan. That's if they're foreigners trying to become Moroccan. Okay, article four.
Article four, in quote, "The Imperial Ottoman Government extraordinarily receives into its allegiance foreigners as well whom it considers to be worthy of an exceptional favor, even should they not have fulfilled the conditions prescribed in the preceding article," end of quote. Article four covers persons who render special services to the Ottoman Empire or to whom the imperial government wishes to render an exceptional favor. A, it is here necessary to mention the case of non-Muslim foreigners, subjects who, within the Dominions of the Empire, embrace the Muslim religion. B, immigrants who come to Turkey for permanent residence acquire Ottoman nationality with no other formality other than of taking an oath of allegiance.
Pause. Read that again. Section B as a bramble.
Section B, "Immigrants who come to Turkey for permanent residence acquire Ottoman nationality with no other formality other that of taking an oath of allegiance."
So in other words, when you become a national of the Ottoman Empire, you have to take an oath of allegiance. You see? All right? Okay.
C, "And if, and a foreign woman, when she is married to an Ottoman subject, ipso facto becomes an Ottoman subject without any further formality."
Pause. Section C, as in Charlie, read it again.
C, "A foreign woman, when she is married to an Ottoman subject, ipso facto becomes an Ottoman subject without any further formality."
So when the men marry a woman that's a foreigner, that woman now becomes a national of the state. This is how the Ottomans were setting it up. All right? Okay, article five.
Article five, in quote, "Persons who, being authorized, enter from Ottoman into a foreign nationality are, from the date when they change their nationality, considered as foreign subjects and treated as such."
Now, we read that on the front, and remember, I said, let's go to article five and read that. So read again. Article five.
Article five, in quote, "Persons who, being authorized, enter from Ottoman into a foreign nationality are, from the date when they change their nationality, considered as foreign subjects and treated as such. But if he or she should enter into a foreign nationality without being authorized by the Imperial Ottoman Government, his or her nationality shall be considered as null and void, and he or she shall be considered as an Ottoman subject as before, and in every matter, he or she shall be treated exactly as Ottoman subjects are treated. In any case, the abandonment by an Ottoman subject of his or her nationality depends on an instrument to be granted in virtue of an imperial irate."
All right. Continue.
This article states very clearly the principle that an Ottoman subject cannot, unless authorized by his government, change his nationality, and that even in case he should, without such authorization, be naturalized in a foreign country, the Ottoman government will not recognize him as a foreign subject. The fact of a prolonged residence in a foreign country does not alter the case, and children born during such residence are Ottoman subjects. An Ottoman subject who by special authorization is allowed to relinquish his nationality is considered from the date of his naturalization as a foreign subject. Although the law does not expressly state so, it is generally admitted that such, that should such Ottoman subject wish to acquire Ottoman nationality, he can do so in the same way and under the same conditions as other foreign subjects. In this connection, it would be interesting to note that a departure from these principles would have been made had the Convention on Naturalization between the United States of America and Turkey been ratified.
Okay, so in this paragraph, what should we take away from just this paragraph? See, let's talk about Dred Scott. Dred Scott was what? He was a Moor subject. Right? But then, under the Naturalization Act, Dred Scott's family became what? Adopted Americans. So therefore, Dred Scott went from being a Moor subject of the Empire Morocco, now his family became naturalized, become Americans, and now the Empire Morocco recognized Dred Scott and his family as what? Foreign subjects. Now, those foreign subjects don't come under the protections of their original country anymore. So Dred Scott, who was listed as Negro, was, and Negro means what? When we look at Etymology Dictionary, you look up the definition of Moor. Moor mean what? Blacks and Negroes. So they had Dred Scott listed as Negro, which means they knew Dred So, they had Dred Scott listed as Negro, which means they knew Dred Scott was what? A Moor, i.e. a Moor subject. And as a Moor subject, and his family, his descendants were naturalized under the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. And then, the United States of America came out with the what? Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy that put Dred Scott's family in a naturalized status. They were adopted to become what? Americans. So, Dred Scott's family became what? Foreign subjects. They were still subjects nonetheless, they were still what? Subjects nonetheless, let's go back. Treaty of eighteen eighty, they were still what? They were still what? Subjects nonetheless, listen. Still a subject no matter what. So, it says, Article fifteen, Treaty of Madrid, says, any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country, so, Empire Morocco still recognized the Moors as being subjects even though they were naturalized. But they recognized them as what? Foreign, foreign subjects. The Ottoman Empire and the Sultan of Morocco was recognizing the Moors as foreign subjects. Therefore, the Moors ended up becoming the same national status as the colonizers. So, the colonizer was American, the Moors became American. If the colonizer was Canadian, then the Moors became Canadian. If the colonizer was British, then the Moors became British, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, they became foreign subjects instead of just regular subjects of Morocco. They became foreign subjects because they learned protections, adoption status under what's commonly known as a open adoption that was recognized by the Sultan, you see? You gotta understand what we're reading. Okay, from here again.
An Ottoman subject who by special authorization is allowed to relinquish his nationality is considered from the date of his naturalization as a foreign subject. Although the law does not expressly state so, it is generally admitted that should such Ottoman subject wish again to acquire Ottoman nationality, he can do so in the same way and under the same conditions as other foreign subjects. In this connection, it would be interesting to note that a departure from these principles would have been made had the Convention on Naturalization between the United States of America and Turkey been ratified.
So, therefore, any, any Moor who's been naturalized can return to Morocco and repatriate back to the state by what? Application to be what? Recognized by the state as being Moroccan again. But it's based upon what? The laws of the government, so the laws, the laws of what? The laws of the government of the state can turn around and issue recognition of Moors being Moroccans again. But what happened? Empire Morocco was in a shallow grave. So, how the hell could the Empire Morocco recognize Moors as Moroccans again when there was no government of the Empire Morocco state? You gotta see why the United States of America didn't want the Moors to use the portal of Article fifteen because the Moors came back as Dorothy back into the Empire Morocco. They could reestablish what again? The government. And then, the Moors end up with what? Again, what did the Moors end up with again? A Sultan. This is Sultan Abdul Smith Al Kabir, Sultan-elect in May of twenty twenty-four, who will take his oath to the Constitution of the Empire Morocco and his oath to the Office of Sultan. And this is what the United States has been trying to stop. The FBI has been trying to stop this. The CIA has been trying to stop this. And the Moor Science Temple been telling all the Moors that they're American. You can't be the Sultan of America. The Sultans are Moroccans. The Moors are Moroccans. The land is Morocco for Moroccans. How the hell these grand sheiks keep going around telling the Moors they're Americans? And sell out, something ain't right. Something is not right. Let's continue.
In conformity with the provisions of that convention, an Ottoman subject who had been naturalized in America without previous authorization from his government and returned to Turkey would during two years be regarded as an American citizen.
Pause, read it again.
In conformity with the provisions of that convention, an Ottoman subject who had been naturalized in America without previous authorization from his government had returned to Turkey would during two years be regarded as an American citizen.
So, therefore, uh, someone who truly has the pedigree and the consignomenity of being an Ottoman, uh, uh, uh descendant was now naturalized an American citizen and now that American citizens are returned back to Ottoman territory, want to claim themselves as Ottoman again. But the Ottoman Government said, we gonna recognize you still as an American citizen, you see that? So, what's this mean? So, if the Empire Morocco was looking at this in similar language, we gotta recognize Moors Americans as what? As Americans. Moors Americans are still naturalized as what? Americans. And by their own decree, they say they're what? Americans. So, the Empire Morocco has to still recognize them as American citizens. And they themselves are saying they're Americans. Their nation, their national identification card, the Temple Moors have on their national, national cards is what? USA citizen. The civic Moors know they have on their card? A Lodiyo American. They're all claiming to be Americans. Rare Bird, Rod Hayes got all the black people saying, we're what? Native Americans. Everybody claiming to be what? Americans, and they don't realize it. Therefore, they're still recognized as naturalized, adopted Americans by the United States of America, the parent state. They got Rare Bird, Rod Hayes, Tajri Bay, Doctor G, uh, 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 Roger Ryan Bay, Light Bay, Cujo Il, Lamont Il, right? Jamal Bay and all the Moors Americans, all the grand sheiks, natural grand sheiks. All the grand governors are still what? Americans as naturalized Americans, they're all adopted. They're still colonized people. So, therefore, the Empire Morocco can't recognize Moors Americans as Moroccans because they're still naturalized as Americans. They have yet to return to the Empire Morocco to do what? Pledge allegiance. Abdul Il toli Mosi Bay coming on his duty has yet to follow the instructions of the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen. None of the grand sheiks have followed the instructions. None of their students have followed the instructions. Even the Ottomans are saying this. The Ottomans saying, they still gonna recognize you as an American citizen even though they know you have the blood pedigree of being Ottoman. But since you've been naturalized, they gonna keep recognizing you as what? An American citizen. Even though you, they know you have the blood pedigree of being Ottoman, they still gonna say, nope, you still a naturalized American citizen. Because you gotta pledge allegiance back to what? The state. Just because you come into territory, don't mean you're recognized. You gotta pledge allegiance back to your mother. Who's the mother? Empire Morocco. Who's the father? Okay. Who's the father? Okay. There is. The Sultan is the father. Abdul Smith Al Kabir is the father. Who's the mother? Empire Morocco. Who's the mother? Empire Morocco is the motherland. Who's the father? Sultan. You see that? It makes it equitable. Mother, father. Because what's the mother? This is the land. What's the father? The office of Sultan, not necessarily the human being. This is an abstract. Empire Morocco is an abstract. Office of Sultan is an abstract. But the abstract has to be full manifest into a human being to sit in the office of Sultan to speak on behalf of who? The motherland, Empire Morocco. So, mother, father, coming together to be the parent state. This is too easy. Too easy. Okay, let's read that again and we'll continue.
In conformity with the provisions of that convention, an Ottoman subject who had been naturalized in America without previous authorization from his government and returned to Turkey would during two years be regarded as a American citizen. If however, he remained in Turkey for more than two years, he would then be regarded as an Ottoman subject and not an American citizen.
Read it again.
In conformity with the provisions of that convention, an Ottoman subject who had been naturalized in America without previous authorization from his government and returned to Turkey would during two years be regarded as an American citizen. If however, he remained in Turkey for more than two years, he would then be regarded as an Ottoman subject and not an American citizen.
Okay, continue.
An Ottoman subject who wishes permission to change his nationality must be of age and he must prove that he has serious commercial or other legitimate relations with the country of which he intends to acquire a citizenship. The Ottoman Government being the judge as to whether such relations are satisfactory, he must further prove that there is no criminal prosecution against him in the Ottoman Empire or that he owes no debts to the Imperial Government. Should the Sublime Porte be satisfied after such investigation, the matter, uh, the matter is submitted to His Imperial Majesty, the Sultan, who can either grant or refuse it. The formalities in connection which obtaining such permission are exceedingly long and not easily accomplished and it is only rarely granted. This permission may exceptionally be granted after an Ottoman subject has been naturalized and permanently domiciled in a foreign country. Such authorization would be more in the nature of an official recognition of the foreign naturalization.
So, therefore, this last sentence, read it again.
Such authorization would be more in the nature of an official recognition of the foreign naturalization.
So, what does that mean? Such authorization for an Ottoman national not to be a foreign national of a different state would be more in the nature of an official recognition of the foreign naturalization. What does that mean? That two states agree through a treaty. Okay? That a, a Ottoman national can be naturalized by the United States of America. If it's already been set for, then that, that Ottoman can now go to the United States of America's territory and pledge allegiance to the United States of America and be naturalized. If they had a treaty between who? Turkey and the United States of America, two states agreeing to this. And this is what the Sultan of Morocco did in eighteen eighty, right? In eighteen eighty, the Sultan of Morocco agreed under Article fifteen, paragraph one, he allowed the Moors to be naturalized. But he also allowed the Moors under what's commonly known as an open adoption to return, to return to Morocco anytime they wanted without any restrictions. And along, as long as they did what? They gotta choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire. They gotta pledge allegiance again. And this is what the Moors never understood. The Moors Americans never understood. They have to return to the Empire Morocco and pledge allegiance to the Empire. Someone told them, they just declared their nationality out of their mouth. Yeah, I'm Moors American. No, you ain't. That ain't even a nationality. That's number one. Number two, you're Moroccans. And so, therefore, Moroccans have to return to Morocco, the Empire, the Empire of Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire. What's the law? After nineteen forty-five, Moors only decolonization needed what? A constitution, that's what? The periphery law. It's a paramount law, it's the constitution, that's the first law. This is what the Moors needed. They can never follow these instructions because the FBI and the CIA had the Moors run around saying they were Americans. How the hell you gonna use the portal of Article fifteen if you think you're American? You would never even understand this because this is for Moroccans. To return to Morocco's jurisdiction of what? The Empire. What about the Empire? The Empire's what? Government. But all the Moors been told they're Americans and they've been told they enforce the Constitution of the United States of America. And this is why they remain naturalized because they've been sold out. They've been hustled. And all the Moors have been stated in adoption status under worship tenure all because the grand sheiks told all the Moors they were American. This is sad. Okay.
It may here be mentioned that a certain class of Ottoman subjects, especially those immigrating to America, are allowed to leave the country on condition that they abandon their Ottoman nationality. The formalities in these special cases are easier and are of frequent occurrence.
Pause. Read it again.
It may here be mentioned that a certain class of Ottoman subjects, especially those immigrating to America, are allowed to leave the country on condition that they abandon their Ottoman nationality.
Pause, read it again.
It may here be mentioned that a certain class of Ottoman subjects, especially those immigrating to America, are allowed to leave the country on condition that they abandon their Ottoman nationality.
So, what happened with the Moors after nineteen thirty? Noble Drali gets assassinated nineteen twenty-nine. A group of Moors came out and said what? Under Resolution seventy-five of nineteen thirty-three, they say they were former Moors. And now, they've been Americanized. So, they accepted their naturalization status. A group of Moors did that. Under the Moor Science Temple nineteen thirty-three, after Noble was assassinated. Noble kept trying to tell us we were Moroccans. He gets assassinated and the Moor Science Temple takes over and said, no, 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 we're Americans. And then, the civic Moors come out here and say the same thing. Oh, man, the temple sold out. And then, the civic Moors turn around and say that they're what? Americans. So, the Temple Moors say they're Americans and the civic Moors say they're Americans. You gotta understand what's happening. And now, you got these foolish people talking about they're Indians and Indians come under similar criminal jurisdiction of what? American. So, everybody's running around saying they're Americans, which means they have abandoned their nationality. Because the eighteen sixty-six treaties, the Reconstruction Treaty between the United States of America and the quote-unquote Indian reservations recognized the freedmen who were Moors as being adopted into the Indian reservations, which means if you were adopted, that's not your real family. You were Moroccans. The United States of America turns around and sets up an adoption agency called the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment and the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy and adopted the Moors to be Americans. So, Moors got adopted as Cherokees and Moors got adopted as Americans. And now, this foolishness is still existing in the year twenty twenty-four. These foolish Moors run around saying they're Americans of the Moor Science Temple and they say they're Americans of Indian tribe. And the whole time, they were Moroccans who have abandoned their nationality. Read it again.
It may here be mentioned that a certain class of Ottoman subjects, especially those immigrating to America, are allowed to leave the country on condition that they abandon their Ottoman nationality.
Okay, so here, the Ottomans in Turkey are leaving the Middle East. Because you gotta remember, the Empire Morocco is a vast, extensive land. It covers the seven seas and the seven continents. So, the Moors then leave the jurisdiction, jurisdiction is based on the name. So, if I wanna leave the jurisdiction Empire Morocco, I do like this. Now, I'm in the United States of America's jurisdiction because I just said I'm American. But if I do like this, now I'm back in the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco because now I'm saying I'm Moroccan, but I haven't even moved my feet nowhere. I ain't going nowhere because it's called jurisdiction. You still standing on the same landmass, but it depends on what? Your political status. Political status means who recognizes you as one of their own. If the United States of America is claiming you, now you're in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. If the Empire Morocco is claiming you, now you're in the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco, but yet, you still standing on the same piece of land. It's jurisdiction, it's in labor. So, the question is, what, what state is claiming you as one of their own? And the Moors Americans were never claimed by the Empire State Government. From the top.
It may here be mentioned that a certain class of Ottoman subjects, especially those immigrating to America, are allowed to leave the country on condition that they abandon their Ottoman nationality. The formalities in these special cases are easier and are of frequent occurrence. Such persons have to present petitions requesting permission to leave the Empire. They pledged themselves never to return to Turkey. They pledged themselves never to return to Turkey and declare that they abandoned their Ottoman nationality. These facts are inserted in the registers of the census and after several copies of their photographs have been deposited and it is clear that they owe nothing to the government, they are permitted to leave the country. It should be remarked that these people have no nationality from the date they... when they abandoned their Ottoman allegiance to that when they obtain naturalization in the country of their adoption.
Read that again.
It should be remarked that these people have no nationality from the date when they abandoned their Ottoman allegiance to that when they obtain naturalization in the country of their adoption.
So the Moors Science Temple Moors abandoned their nationality. You become what? American now. They no longer want to be Moroccans. So they assassinated Nobu Drahili who was telling all the people they were Moroccans. He said, "We descendants of Moroccans." So they assassinate him and all those Moors came out the temple, including Farq Muhammad of the Nation Islam. And all of a sudden, everybody's, ooh, all of a sudden, everybody's now American. And everybody now also wanna call themselves the Black American or they call themselves Moors American. Why they call themselves Moors American? First of all, that's a compound adjective. It's not a noun. This is why they don't put the word Moors American in the dictionary because then they would have to do what? Describe what a Moors American is. How is it that Beyonce got the word booty licious in the dictionary but the Grand Sheiks come down and put the word Moors American in the dictionary? Because they don't want it to be what? Defined. Because they were defined as what? A religious corporation and not a nationality. So you gotta understand, the Moors Science Temple and the civic Moors are all selling themselves out to remain being American because this is what the FBI wanted them to do. And the tradition has kept on because the FBI has always been involved. That and keep like I said, Grand Sheik is synonymous with the word ministers, you got ministers of mosque. So Louis Farrakhan keeps telling everybody they're black. What black what? American. Then the Moors Science Temple keep telling everybody what? They're Moors American. Rare Bird and Rod Hayes, Dan Calloway, Top Cats, Young Elder keep telling everybody they're what? Native American. Under the word Indian, everybody say they're American. Because this is what the FBI and the CIA wanted everybody to do. But yeah, this is called private law. But when you say you're American, that's public law. Because the United States of America got everybody naturalized and adoption status and they trying to keep you from going through the portal to return to what? Morocco. To put together what? Your political institutions as the empire Morocco, they don't want you to do what? This was the game right here, they were trying to stop this. To keep the Moors from enacting a constitution for the empire Morocco. That's been the whole game, the whole time, and guess who's been helping them? The Moors American. Guess who's been helping them? The NAACP. Telling everybody it's all about you being black. Is the advancement of black people, really? Black people can advance on that nominee gear? Called black? No you can't because you're still American at the end of the day. Black people are just simply Americans, you ain't black. You're just American. Meaning you're adopted. You used to be Moroccans. Who else has got the Moors all in the proper status? Now you gotta look up, you gotta start studying the HBCUs, Historically Black, really? Historically Black? No, Historically Moors. This is why it's called Moore House in Atlanta. Moore House. For Moors. But now it's called what? Historically Black University. Because now they don't want you to understand that you're Moors. They want you to think you're proud black people because proud black people are who? Americans. Naturalized. They don't know nothing about Article fifteen, the Treaty of Madrid, and their HBCU presidents are not gonna tell them because they all getting grants from the federal government. And the federal government knows these people at the Moore House are all Moors. Continue, right here again.
It should be remarked that these people have no nationality from the date when they abandoned their Ottoman allegiance to that when they obtain naturalization in the country of their adoption.
Once you're adopted, you take on the adopted nationality of the adopted state and you became Americans, you used to be Moroccans, continue.
Remark on Article five. The Turkish text of this begins in the plural, quote, "persons who enter from Ottoman," end of quote, etc. And continues in the singular, quote, "but if he should enter into a foreign nationality," end of quote, etc. Article six. If the Ottoman Empire so wished it can reject from its subjection the person who, without authorization from the Imperial Ottoman Government, changes his nationality in a foreign country or enters into the military service of a foreign government, the return into the Imperial dominions, the Ottoman Empire of persons of this category whose nationality has been rejected is forbidden. After laying down the principle that an Ottoman subject cannot, without permission from his sovereign, change his nationality and that even if he should do so, such change shall not be recognized by the Imperial Government, the legislator, points out in Article six. If the possible consequences of such change with...
Pause, pause, alright, read that again.
Okay. After laying down the principle that an Ottoman subject cannot, without permission from his sovereign, change his nationality and that even if he should do so, such change shall not be recognized by the Imperial Government, the legislator points out in Article six, the possible consequences of such change.
Alright, so what should we take away from this sentence we just read? Okay. Here we go, so after laying down the principle that the Ottoman subject cannot, without permission from his sovereign, change his nationality and that even if he should do so, such change shall not be recognized by the Imperial Government. The legislator points out in Article six, the possible consequences of such change. So what should we interpret from that? Okay. Check this out, Moors. This is what Moors have to understand. Right, because you've had a lot of Moors keep saying, uh, Moors are sovereign. Right, this is what Moors have been taught. They each individual Moor is sovereign and that every Moor should stand on their square all by themselves. And what Moors don't realize is when you say that, you're saying that you're sovereign all by yourself. And what did we learn when we looked up the definition of sovereignty? Sovereignty is what? The state. There's nothing more supreme, nothing more superior than the state itself. So what we have to take away from this sentence is that when you're talking to sovereign, sovereign means who? The state. The head of state and the government itself. You see how the word sovereign, right? It's got a capital S, that's a proper noun. So when you see the word sovereign, that word should mean to you the state, the constitution, head of state and its government. That's called politics, right? So political. So political means the government itself. Right? So check this out, let's interpret this real quick because this is what Moors need to understand. So it says, "After laying down the principle that an Ottoman subject cannot, without permission from his sovereign, change his nationality and that even if he should do so, such change shall not be recognized by the Imperial Government." Let's pause right there. So what's happening? This is what I need the Moors to understand. The Moors have been running around as subjects, right? Let's change the word Ottoman subject to the word Moor subject. So the Moors as subjects of Morocco, all the Moors been taught that they are what? Sovereign. All the Moors think they're individual sovereigns. And guess what? Subjects, right? Subjects are not sovereign. Who's sovereign? They tell you right here, it is who? The government. It is the government, the government is sovereign. The Imperial Government, what's that on the board? Political, the government. You see what's next to it? The word legislator. That's the next word up here, legal. So it's political, legal, what? Of what? The state, and what's the name of the state? What are we reading? It's Turkey. Right, so these are Turkey's laws we're reading. So the name of the state is what? Turkey? And then they talking about the Imperial Government, which is political. Then they mention the word legislator, right? That's what? Legal. So that's the government and the laws of what? The state of Turkey. But what Moors have been taught is each individual Moor can be sovereign all by themselves. Right? This is what, this is the misinformation and the dis... disinformation, right? Which is called propaganda. That all the Moors have been purchasing packages from the Moors Science Temple, Nibbs purchasing packages from what's coming on the civic Moors. Right? And now people buying packages from Rare Bird to say she's some Cherokee national and Rare Bird say she's a sovereign soul. Right? So all these people are claiming to be sovereigns all by themselves, but yet they don't understand statehood. Who is sovereign? Only the state. Then the state vests what? The state vests sovereignty to the government and the head of state. And then the state turns around after gives the powers to the government, the government recognizes the people's nationality because it's the government who has our forms to allow people to be recognized by the state. So you gotta understand out here, when Moors keep saying they're sovereign, you're not sovereign. The state is sovereign, right? And the government, the government and its legislative branch turns around and recognizes, it recognizes you as being a national of the state. So when you hear the United States call Moors or they calling fake Indians, when they refer to these people as sovereign citizen, what is it that the United States and the Southern Union States trying to tell these people? You're acting like what? You're acting like you, you are sovereign. All by yourself. You acting like you're the state, the constitution? You acting like you're the executive branch, legislative branch, judicial branch and the citizen, all tied up in one human being. And you're acting like you're superior all by yourself. And this is why they call you sovereign citizen because you done purchased some fraud packages, right? From some group that just hustled you. So let's read it again. Look who gives permission for you to be a national or look who gives permission for you to be naturalized. Read again though.
After laying down the principle that an Ottoman subject cannot, without permission from his sovereign, change his nationality and that even if he should do so, such change shall not be recognized by the Imperial Government, the legislator points out in Article six, the possible consequences of such change.
So therefore, the subject, which is the human being, has to get permission, permission from who? The sovereign. And the sovereign is who? The state and its government and its legislative branch, you see that? So who extends sovereignty to you to have a nationality? The state and its government. But unfortunately, the Grand Sheiks and these other fake people that sell you fake paperwork saying you're Indian, they're not recognized by no state. They're not the officials of a state. A state is sovereign and it has to be an external state, it's that, external state that's already recognized in treaties. So there's no such thing as a Moors America state. There's no such thing as some Cherokee nation-state when you say your nation-state is a holy state. This is what Rare Bird run around talking about, she got a charter called a holy state. She's a holy sovereign. Pure carnage. Charters are not the sovereign, the sovereign is the state. So you gotta understand, we've been hustled as a people. And this is what we gotta start reading, when we're reading Turkey's laws. Keep in mind, we're reading the United States of America in nineteen oh six was talking about Turkey's laws from eighteen sixty-nine regarding what? Nationality. And naturalization, right? And who you gotta get permission from in order to change your nationality? You gotta get it from the sovereign, the sovereign's the state and its government. Let's read it again from the top.
After laying down the principle that an Ottoman subject cannot, without permission from his sovereign, change his nationality and that even if he should do so, such change shall not be recognized by the Imperial Government, the legislator points out in Article six, the possible consequences of such change.
Continue.
When an Ottoman subject without permission is naturalized in a foreign country, the Ottoman government may contend itself with simply considering such naturalization null and void. In that case, if such a person returns to Turkey, he is allowed to remain as an Ottoman subject. As his foreign naturalization is null and void, he is deprived of no rights whatever as an Ottoman subject. And may however, if it should so wish, reject such a person from its subjection. Such rejection implies prohibition of such person returning or remaining in Turkey and disqualifies him from the right to inherit and hold real property in Turkey.
Pause, so what are we learning here? So in the previous paragraph, this is about what? Some subject, right? A subject or a national or citizen of the Ottoman Empire fraudulently went over to get some American citizenship. So you fraudulently go get some American citizenship, then your state, your original state does not have to recognize your naturalized status. Right? Doesn't have to recognize it whatsoever because you didn't get what? Permission. You didn't get permission from the government, right? You gotta get permission from who? The government. And the government has set forth legislation that tells the government how to deal with that foreign policy or laws regarding permission. You see? So what happens next? Okay, so in the next paragraph, it says, "In that case, if such a person returns to Turkey," right? Because you done went over there to be naturalized, which means you trying to become an American citizen. Now you trying to return to Turkey. Listen. "In that case, if such a person returns to Turkey, he is allowed to remain as an Ottoman subject. As his foreign naturalization is null and void, he is deprived of no rights whatsoever as an Ottoman subject." So if the Ottoman government had given an Ottoman national permission to go be naturalized, then he got permission. That means when he come back to Turkey, all his rights are restored, right? Okay, now you already learning however. Listen to what it says next, okay? Alright, so it says, "It may however, if it should so wish, reject such a person from its subjection." So let's say Turkey and their law says, "But if you want to go be naturalized, now you wanna come back to Turkey." The Turkey government got a right to do what? Reject your application to return to be a Turkey national. If you want to be an American national, now you trying to come back and be Turkish again? The Turkish government got a right to say no. You see, wishing the empire Morocco learn from this? The empire Morocco have to learn that when Moors pledge their allegiance to the empire Morocco, then all of a sudden they wanna leave and go to be American national. Then they don't wanna be American national no more, they wanna be naturalized Americans again. Now they wanna return back to empire Morocco, guess what? Empire Morocco got a right to say what? No. You see, this is what we learning from this, this is what Moors gotta learn from this. This is why we're reading it, we're learning what? Procedural law, we're learning substantive law and procedural law. We gotta learn from these Moors. Alright. So if the Turkey government had given a Turkey national the right to become American national, now they're naturalized, but now that naturalized American now wants to return back to the territory of Turkey and be recognized as a Turkey national again, the Turkey government got some options, right? So check it out, it says, "However, if it should so wish, reject such a person from its subjection." Subjection. Such rejection implies prohibition of such person returning or remaining in Turkey and disqualifies him from the right to inherit and hold real property in Turkey, you see that? So the government can determine whether you gonna be able to hold on to real property as a Turkey national. So this is what Moors gotta understand, if you trying to remain naturalized, you come back and pledge your allegiance to empire Morocco, then all of a sudden you wanna go over there and be American national again, be naturalized. And you trying to come back into the Moroccan territory to be recognized as the recognized part of empire Morocco, the empire Morocco has a right to say your property now is in the hands of the empire Morocco, it's not your property no more because you left it, you abandoned it. of the Empire Morocco. It's not your property no more, because you left it. You abandoned it." So it's no longer Turkish property. It, it's, you became American. So you left all your Turkey rights. This is what Turkey is saying. All right, so let's take it from the top. Uh, right here though.
"In that case, if such a person returns to Turkey, he is allowed to remain as an Ottoman subject. And his foreign naturalization is null and void. He is deprived of no rights whatever as an Ottoman subject. It may however, if it should so wish, reject such a person from its subjection. Such rejection implies prohibition of such person returning or remaining in Turkey and disqualifies him from the right to inherit and hold real property in Turkey. It should not be out of place to quote here Articles Two and Three of the Law of Rabi U Akur thirteen hundred of eighteen eighty-three, in regard to tenure of landed property by former Ottoman subjects. Quote, persons who without obtaining official authorization from the imperial government have changed their nationality and whose Ottoman nationality has been canceled by the imperial government are deprived of the right of owning landed property in Turkey and of obtaining it by inheritance, end of quote. The mooc properties of persons who may, according to the foregoing article, be deprived of the right of ownership and inheritance are divided among their heirs who are Ottoman subjects like personal property."
Pause. So Moors gotta pay attention. If a Moor pledged their allegiance to Empire Morocco, then they decide to run back over there and be a naturalized American again. Now they don't wanna be naturalized American no more. Now they trying to return back to Empire Morocco. The Turkish government doesn't, does not have to recognize that Turkey national as owning any property. So therefore, if that Turkish national had property under Turkish laws, the Turkish government can take all that property away, because you're flip-flopping back and forth from being Turkey national to American national. Now you wanna come back and be a Turkish national. The Turkish government doesn't play that. They'll take all your property, all your wealth. This is what we gotta learn from this. The Empire Morocco's gotta learn not to play these games and let Moors flip-flop. That they pledge their allegiance back to Empire Morocco, they make a little finance, then they run back over to the jurisdiction, United States of America, declaring they're American nationals again. Then all of a sudden they wanna come back over to Empire Morocco. No, 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 it doesn't work like that. Once you pledge your allegiance to Empire Morocco, all that property and wealth stays with the Empire Morocco, just like it stayed with the Turkish government. See, that's gonna stop the flip-flop. You came into Empire Morocco broke, then you gonna leave Empire Morocco broke. Even if you acquired wealth while you was a national of the Empire Morocco, you will not leave with it. That's what the Ottomans told all of their nationals. "We're not gonna play this flip-flop game." You see? Okay, right here though.
"Persons who, without obtaining official authorization from the imperial government, have changed their nationality and whose Ottoman nationality has been canceled by the imperial government are deprived of the right of owning land property in Turkey and obtaining it by inheritance. Quote, "The mooc properties of persons who may, according to the foregoing article, be deprived of the right of ownership and inheritance are divided among their heirs who are Ottoman subjects like personal property. But according to the provisions of Article One Ten and One Eleven of the Land Code, such persons have no longer the right of tapu possessions in miri or mevkufi lands. Miri or mevkufi lands which they may have possessed before they changed their nationality without going to their heirs become excheated. Exactly the same course is followed in the case of Ijaray Teneli Vakuf property."
Pause. You see right here, Moors? So the Turkey government is saying that, "We're not playing this flip-flop game." If, if you pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco, or you pledge your allegiance to the Turkey government, and now you run over there and try to be American national again, then you wanna try to come back and be Amer- excuse me, be a, a, a national of the Empire Morocco, right? Trying to be Moroccan again or Turkish again. The Turkish governor said, "We're gonna excheat all of your property you had." When you're a Moroccan national, you had, uh, uh, millions of dollars, you had property, all, all your personal property is gonna be excheated. What does that mean? The Empire Morocco's gonna take your property. It don't belong to you no more, because you're flip-flopping with your nationality, you see? So the Empire Morocco will excheat your property. You won't be able to claim that Moroccan no more. You see that? So you went from being a, a naturalized American, now you come on, pledge your allegiance to Empire Morocco, you become a Moroccan again. You gained some wealth or you get some property. Then all of a sudden now, you, you don't wanna play the Moroccan game no more, because you got your hands on a little bit of finance. You run back over to American jurisdiction, you ain't leaving with it. All your, all your property is gonna get excheated. All your land property and most likely everything you got in your personal bank account is gonna get lent by the Empire Morocco. That stops the flip-flop, you see? And this is why this word right here, "excheat," is so important. That even the Empire Morocco can excheat property back to the Empire Morocco, that now that national won't be to leave with it. That's very important to understand. This is what the Empire Morocco's gotta learn from what the Ottoman Empire was saying about their subjects, you see? Let's continue. This is important information. We gotta learn from this. We gotta learn how to write laws. Okay, now over here.
Articles One, One Ten?
I think so.
And One Eleven of the Land Code. "The land of an Ottoman subject does not pass by inheritance or his heirs who are foreign subjects. And a foreign subject cannot have the right to tapu possession in the land of an Ottoman subject, end of quote. New quote, "The land of the person who, without obtaining official authorization, abandons his Ottoman nationality, does not pass by inheritance to his children, grandchildren, father, mother, brother, sister, husband, or wife, who are Ottoman or foreign subjects. It becomes forthwith is cheated."
Pause. So you see that? See how the Ottomans breaking it down? You ain't gonna try to run back over there to the American jurisdiction, talking about you left all your property in your mama name. Oh, I left all my property in my children's name. No. You wanna go be American again? Then you came into this broke, and you gonna leave broke. That's what's gonna happen. That's called law. Who passed the law? The government passed what? Legal. The laws of the legislative branch or the foreign policy, right? Coves and statutes of the state has to set forth this type of language, that the state, the state will excheat. See right there? It becomes, your property will become excheated. Right? You know, it will become forthwith excheated. What does excheated mean? All your property goes back to a probate of the state. What state? Empire Morocco. And you can go back over there and be American all you want to. That's what's gonna happen. Because trust me, I've seen it already happen already. I'm seeing Moors pledge their allegiance to a Moroccan state, two weeks later, two months later, two years later, they talking about, "Ah, I'm gonna go back over here and be uh, Negro, Black, and Color, or Moorish American again." Whatever it is, they think they just get up after they pledge some allegiance, they just get up one day and just leave. I got no problem with that. That's, if, if, if the Empire Morocco gives you permission to leave, leave. Because first you gotta get permission, because if you pledge your allegiance, now you gotta get permission from the Moroccan government to go back to be American, uh, 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 naturalized American again, right? But guess what you gonna leave with? Nothing. You came in broke, you gonna leave broke. Whatever you came in with, you gonna leave with, period. All the rest of your property gonna get excheated, back to the state. Now guess what you gonna learn next? Guess what we're gonna read next? Then it's gonna go into auction. The state gonna sell everything, because you flip-flopping. You have no loyalty. So why should the state have loyalty to you? You see? Check it out. All right. Okay, let's start right here.
"It becomes forthwith is cheated. And without seeking for persons entitled to the right to tapu, it is put up at auction and given to the intended purchaser, the highest bidder."
Pause. Read it again.
"It becomes forthwith is, is cheated. And without seeking for persons entitled to the right to tapu, it is put up at auction and given to the intended purchaser, the highest bidder."
So your property go into an auction. It will not pass on to your so-called heirs. So once you pledge your allegiance back to Empire Morocco, it should be permitted. The Empire Morocco will not play this flip-flop game on you running back to the jurisdiction of the United States, or running back to the jurisdiction of Canada, or running back to jurisdiction of Great Britain, or running back to jurisdiction of France. It will not work. You will leave with whatever it is you came with. The rest will be auctioned off. All right, continue.
"In case however, such person has changed his nationality by obtaining official permission, his land is not is cheated, but remains vested in him."
Pause. Read it again.
"In case however, such person has changed his nationality by obtaining official permission, his land is not is cheated, but remains vested in him."
Exactly. So you gotta do what? You gotta follow the instructions of the government. The government's law, that's legal. Right? Of what? The state. So if the state, the, the state government gives you permission to be a naturalized American again, then you better keep your property. But if you just try to run over to the na- to the, to the jurisdiction, United States of America, without getting permission from the Empire Morocco's government, then you gonna lose all your property and get excheated. But if you get permission, it will not be excheated. It's just that easy. This is what the Empire Morocco's gotta learn from this. We need to adopt similar language in our laws. This will stop the flip-flop. Let's continue.
"This however, on condition that the government whose nationality he has acquired should have signed the protocol attached to the law allowing the acquisition of landed property by foreign subjects, end of quote. The right to cancel the Ottoman nationality of one of its subjects is vested solely in the imperial government and is exercised only in rare and extreme cases. Article Seven. "The woman whom while an Ottoman subject marries a foreigner may return to her original nationality if, within three years following the date of her husband's death, she petitions for it. The provision of this article applies to the person. The matter of ownership of mooc, arazi property is subject to the general laws and regulations, end of quote. This article does not clearly state that an Ottoman woman who marries a foreign subject follows the nationality of her husband, but that result is implied and made clear by subsequent ministerial circulars and a decision of the Council of State, as well as by the general practice followed in the matter. And it can now be stated that such a woman marrying a foreign subject ipso facto becomes a foreign subject and does not need to apply for or obtain authorization from the imperial government. The somewhat obscure wording of the article is explained by the fact, A, that according to the Shari' law, the marriage of a non-Muslim woman who is a Muslim woman who is a subject of the Muslim state with a foreign subject has no effect on her nationality and she still remains a subject of the Muslim state. The Ottoman legislator, while attending and inserting in the Law of eighteen sixty-nine a principle sanctioned by almost all civilized countries, did not wish to state clearly this principle which might seem to be in flagrant contradiction with the provisions of the sacred Shari' law. The difference in the two systems of law may imply very serious consequences in the matter of inheritance. B, the second explanation for this somewhat obscure wording is that the Ottoman subject woman may marry a foreigner whose laws do not grant her his nationality. In that case, if the Ottoman law had very clearly stated that by the fact of her marriage with a foreign subject, she loses her Ottoman nationality. While on the other hand, it so happened that his law did not grant her his nationality, then she would be left without a nationality. This article therefore has been worded in this way in order to meet all exigencies. An exception is made in the case of Turkish women marrying Persians in Turkey. Such mixed marriages are forbidden in virtue of an imperial firman of the year of twelve thirty-seven, as well as by a regulation and grand visceral order of twelve ninety-one. The present Hazira year is thirteen twenty-four. If however, Turkish women should contrary to this prohibition marry Persians, they as well as any children born to, of such marriages are nonetheless considered to be Ottoman subjects. Article Eight. Quote, "The children even if they should be minors of persons who have changed their Ottoman nationality or have been deprived of it, do not follow the nationality of their fathers, but remain Ottoman subjects. And the children of the foreigner who has entered into the Ottoman nationality, even if they should be minors, do not follow the nationality of their father, but are considered as foreigners, end of quote. This article is based on the principle that children born before the change of nationality of their fathers do not follow the newly acquired condition of their father. This is true both in the case of the children of Ottomans who have become foreign subjects and of the children of foreigners who have become Ottoman subjects. However, children born after the change of nationality of their father follow his citizenship." Article Nine. Quote, "Every person inhabiting the imperial dominions is considered as an Ottoman subject and treated as an Ottoman subject. If he or she is a foreign subject, it is necessary for him or her to prove it in a regular manner, end of quote. In reading this article, it must be borne in mind that a large number of Ottoman subjects have obtained an ambiguous foreign nationality and enjoyed the privileges of the capitulations. The sub-line porté aimed at curtailing the latter and putting an end to the abuses of foreign protection. It therefore declares the general rule that every person residing in the empire is an Ottoman subject. He who claims foreign nationality must prove it. Questions of nationality are examined by an office specially created for this purpose, namely, the Bureau of Nationality, attached to the Ottoman Department of Foreign Affairs. This office does not regard as conclusive evidence of foreign nationality the fact that a person is the bearer of a foreign passport or is registered in a foreign consulate. And B, in the present translation of the Law of eighteen sixty-nine, the Turkish word, quotes, "to be it," end of quote, "subjection" has been rendered as nationality, end quotes, citizenship, end quotes, or allegiance, end of quote."
All right, and that's the end of the reading, uh, regarding the Turkey government, right? So keep in mind, and I know this has been a, a long class today, but keep in mind, this is about Turkey's government. And the United States of America was talking about this in nineteen oh six. The United States of America was talking about Turkey's laws regarding the year eighteen sixty-nine regarding what? Naturalization and nationality. That's why they talk about in Turkey, Turkey's nationality, right? So, so what should we take away from this long read? Well, this was all about studying what? First of all, what's the name of the state? Turkey. You see? The parties must be known, right? Law is precise when it comes to who? The state. So the name of state is Turkey, right? And Turkey, then it started talking about their imperial government, and they started talking about their legislators, you see? And this is what Moors have to take away from it. We never had a state. We never had a government. We never had laws. This whole time, we were being sold these fictitious packages to say each and every Moor were sovereign all by themselves. It was pure BS. It was fraud. Right? And now unfortunately, you got Black America buying these fictitious packages from Rare Bird, right? And Rod Hayes is saying, "You some Cherokee national of a sovereign soul, holy state." There's a charter. It's all fraud, you see? Nobody's going back to read law. Rare Bird's not gonna read law out loud to you. Rod, Rod Mariah Bay not gonna read law out loud to you. Light Bay ain't gonna read law out loud to you. Taj Street Bay is not gonna read- Taj Sri Bay is not gonna read this to you. None of the grass sheets gonna read this. Guess who else is not gonna read it? The NAACP is not gonna read this out loud to you. BET not gonna read this out loud to you. The HBCU president is not gonna read this out loud to you. Avera Khan is not gonna read this out loud to you. Nobody wants you to know that you've been naturalized and naturalized mean you've been adopted. They don't want you to know the answer to the test. But I'll tell you the answer to the test. So in order for us to fix this problem solution, first we have to understand, we needed our own what? Political, legal, economic, social, and then cultural institutions. We needed governmental institutions to fix our problems, right? Because the state recognizing your nationality, right? So in my closing, as I'm starting to wrap up, listen. Now we go back to the Constitution for the Empire Morocco, cuz we just finished talking about the Turkish Empire. Now we have to talk about what's really germane, which is what? The Constitution for the Empire Morocco, right? For the Constitution for Empire Morocco, now the Constitution that recognizes the state, what's the name of the state? Empire Morocco. Now, now you come down, in this, in this Constitution, right? Article two. What does Article two say? Now?
Article two, one, "Moroccans shall be the nationality of the Moor."
Okay, read it again.
Article two, number one, "Moroccans shall be the nationality of the Moor."
So now the Constitution's recognizing your nationality. Who's recognizing your nationality? The state, Empire Morocco. You see? And then the government, which is political, this, this starts to set forth what? Laws. Cuz the law, the first law was what? The Constitution. That's the primary law, right? That's the paramount law, the peremptory law. It's paramount, it's first, it's superior. You see? That's your internal domestic law, that's the Constitution. The Constitution tells you the name of the state, and it tells you the nationality of the people, which is Moroccan. You see that? This is what we had to learn, this is what we never knew. Okay, Article three, now?
Article three, one, "National sovereignty shall best in the people who shall exercise it through their representatives and referendums of the state."
Alright, so Article three, "National sovereignty shall best in the people who shall exercise it through their representatives and referendums of the state," right? Let's read it again. Article three. "National sovereignty shall best in the people who shall exercise it through their representatives and referendums of the state," right? So sovereignty, sovereignty shall be vested in the people, but then the people turn around and vest that sovereignty into who? Into who? The representatives, right, which is the government, and all the referendums, which is you voting on bills, et cetera. Of what? The state. You see that? Moors never had any, any type of laws of a constitution, so we can set up an organized Jewish society for the Empire Morocco state to recognize the nationality of the people. All this time, we've allowed the Moor Science Temple, which is a religious corporation, to tell us what our nationality is. Can't no church tell you what your nationality is? Who can tell you what your nationality is? The state, you see that? The state! That's the only people who tell your nationality, only the state is sovereign, and sovereignty is extended from the state and its government. This is what people don't understand, right? So speaking of representatives, right, so Article three, from the top, it says again. Article three, "National sovereignty shall best in the people who shall exercise it through their representatives," right? Their representatives of the state, so speaking of representative of the state, as we start to close out, who's the representative of the state? Is the Sultan Ali, Abdul Smith Al Khabir, right? He's one of the representatives, because the Sultan represents what? Head of state, you see? So now we got representatives that can now sit in the office, the political offices of the government. We have to reinstate the government and reinstate the state. Now the government can put together laws, and the first law is what? The Constitution to recognize your nationality. Because the parties must be known. So with that being said, in my closing, I wanna say, long live the Empire Morocco and long live the Sultan. Aye wadah, Islam.
Islam.